Good morning, welcome to City Hall. Before we call our meeting to order, I'd like Paul Lewis from Mercy Hospital, who's over the Chaplain Program there and the other hospitals that are under Mercy's auspices around the state, to come and give our invocation. And then if I could, ask David Greenwell to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would all please rise?
Oh God, Creator of all that is good, all that is holy, with grateful hearts we come to you today, thankful for the many gifts you graciously shower upon us. We are thankful for the gift of life, the gift of your mark upon our hearts, and the gift of this great community in which we are privileged to live and serve. Bless all the citizens of Oklahoma City. May we know the abundance of your great love through the loving actions of others. Be with this city council, give them a spirit of wisdom and understanding, may they know clarity, justice, and compassion in their deliberations, and may they and we always have in mind the common good of the citizens of Oklahoma City, confident that we are made in your image and likeness. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a little, we're gonna do a little switch if it's okay with you all in the council. We're gonna have a swearing-in of a judge and we're waiting for a robe to come so we can do, uh, the robe has arrived? Stacy, do we have the robe yet or not?
It's on its way.
It's on its way, so if it's okay with the council, I'd like to defer item 3A until the robe arrives and go to item B through F, a series of appointments.
Motion to second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Please cast your votes and they are so appointed. Then we have item G, a resolution approving travel expenses for the mayor to attend the U.S. Council of Mayors. What is the council's desire? Motion, second, any discussion? Cast your votes. Thank you. Moving on, we have to receive the general council proceedings for August 14th and approve the general of council proceedings for August, uh, for July 31st and August 7th. Motion to second, cast your votes, and is so ordered. We have one striking already and you have some other uncontested continuance, City Manager.
I do, starting on page 22, under item 8F1, page 22, item D 1737 South Missouri, we ask that be stricken, we need to rework for an additional structure. And then moving to page 23, under items 8G1, unsecured, item D 4122 Jones Boulevard, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item G 1320 Southwest 9th, North West 9th Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item H 1328 North West 9th Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner secured. Item I 3401 North West 14th Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item K 3615 North West 15th Street, we ask that be stricken, that is now occupied. Item O 2320 North West 39th Street, we ask that be stricken, owner has secured. Item V 2705 North West 58th Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item X 301 North West 84th Street, we ask that be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
Thank you, Jim. Let's recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, seven items. Motion to second, are there any discussion or questions?
You all have a question. There are two different kinds of settlements in here, compromise A and compromise B settlements. I wonder what the difference was.
I'm sure Craig Freeman or Laura Johnson or some of our workers' comp folks can come in and-
I should've asked that question this morning because I met with some of our comp folks this morning, but I, my mind wasn't in high gear yet.
I'm sure they'll be in in just a second and answer it for you.
Thank you. I can get the question answered later, there's no sense in holding up proceedings.
Do you want to just go ahead?
Yeah, well, please go ahead.
We'll get back to you in a minute, Mr. Ryan.
Okay. Any further discussion? Cast your votes and it is so approved. Adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority?
The Workers' Comp, sir.
Okay. Craig?
Yes, okay. So, the compromise A is a joint petition and the compromise B is an agreed order. Agreed order is full and final settlement and it's language that we have had in the past with, that were in our agendas where we'd have the joint petition or agreed order. The statute's changed and so we're just trying to use the same terminologies that they're using.
Okay, we have already adjourned the OC MFA. Before proceeding then with the agenda, let's go back and go to the swearing-in ceremony and I'd like to ask Councilman White, who's the head of the Judiciary Committee, to make some introductory remarks and introduce the people who are involved in the swearing-in if you would.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. I, it's a real pleasure to introduce to you today the new municipal judge. I've known Gary Payne a long, long time and as I know a number of other people on the council have known him or known of him for quite a while. We're very, we've been very blessed over the last few years to have the kind of leadership at the municipal court system that to some extent had been lacking in previous years with Judge Manger and I have every belief that selection of Judge Payne today will continue that same kind of leadership. I think, before we do the swearing-in part of it, if you'd introduce the justice and your wife and anybody else here with you, I'd appreciate that, Gary, if you'd come on up to the microphone and start the process.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, Vice Mayor and council members, it's a privilege for me to be here, I'm really looking forward to this and to serving you. I do have with me my wife, Susie, and her brothers and sister and my son and his friend and one of my best friends over here and they are all longtime residents of Oklahoma City with very close and fond ties to our community. I would, it's my privilege today to have Justice Yvonne Cogard swear me in and I would like to tell you that I have known her since 1966 and I have admired the hard work she did to become an attorney and a justice of Supreme Court and also admire the hard work she is doing as a justice of Supreme Court and it's a real privilege for me to have her here today to swear me in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, squishy.
Well, it's indeed an honor for me to be here this morning. We're going to swear Gary in to a very limited tribe of the Black Robes and it is wonderful to see you, I watch you guys on TV. And so it's really wonderful to be here with you this morning. It's always a pleasure to swear in a friend. Justice Lester Reynolds from the Court of Civil Appeals, the late Judge Reynolds, used to say, "Our friends can do these jobs as well as anyone else's." Well, but it's really good when you know your friend can do the job better than anyone else's. I have known Gary since I was a med tech, working at Medical Arts Lab, going to night school at OCU, and I knew Susie's daddy because we did work for him, so I really feel I'm a part of this celebration. And so it is indeed with honor and excitement and enthusiasm that I ask Gary and Susie to come forward and we'll administer the oath of office. Raise your right hand, repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Gary Payne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Or any act or for the performance or non-performance.
Performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a municipal judge.
As a municipal judge.
Of the city of Oklahoma City.
Of the city of Oklahoma City.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seeing none, let's move on then and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, three items. Motion to second, any questions? Cast your votes. Adjourn OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistant Trust, again, three items. Motion to second, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, on the, it says that we will not meet code requirements, whose code is that, is it city code, state code, national code?
Let me see if somebody from the water kilners can come in and help answer that. Which, which item are you-
It's item A and we're redoing fleet maintenance facility and we allude to the fact that it doesn't meet code requirements. I'll get to the answer later, it's not anything really bad.
We'll get back to you for the specifics on that.
And then I was curious if those are-
Here we go.
Yeah, this general didn't meet fire and safety codes, either one, we store materials on the second floor.
So they're essentially state code requirements or city-
Yes.
Or both?
Both.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, please cast your votes and it is so passed. Adjourn OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. We have a motion in a second, are there any individual considerations?
Pat, you're on, seeing one, see four.
I'm sorry, what was it?
C is in Charlie 1 and C is in Charlie 4.
Okay, any others? David?
Your Honor, item Z.
AI and AF. R.
A.
Okay, and then we have some citizens also have wished to speak on some of the items, so let's take the council ones and then we'll call the citizens forward for their comments. Let's start with Pat then on C1 and C4.
I was just a little confused, these are the same developments and C1 turns it down and C4 approves it and I wondered what kind of changes were made between C1 and C4 that changed the feelings of the planning commission.
This application originally came in as a straight R1 zoning request and at the planning commission, they felt like there needed to be a PUD to set up some design standards and things like that. So the applicant felt strongly that he needed, he just wanted the R1 zoning and didn't need the PUD, but he presented it. So when it went to planning commission, they considered both cases, recommended denial for the straight zoning and approval for the PUD. But the applicant would like the council to consider both cases when it comes to you for hearing.
These will be set for hearing at some future date, both of these will be on the agenda?
They'll be on at the same time and the R1 was originally inconform, is in conformance with the plan, so that's why he felt he didn't need to do the PUD, but he did it to get it-
And the PUD was instigated to provide some additional controls over the development, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Al, thank you.
David?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. I was gonna see if perhaps Mr. Freeman could come up and visit just for a minute about this program, it's actually enhancing or expanding the current program the city has with the state of Oklahoma as it relates to sales tax.
Yes, sir. We talked a bit about this back in the spring, that we came forward with the change in the ordinance on citations that could be issued on failure to pay the sales tax or the use tax. What this does is it, it's an agreement with the tax commission that provides the authority for the city to be able to make direct contact with vendors. As you're aware, the, we have a contract with the tax commission to collect our sales and use tax on our behalf. What this does is allows us to make contact directly with the vendors, we'll send collection letters and we're working on a program, we're gonna target the worst offenders first, those who owe the most amount, the largest amount, or have the longest period of time where they've been delinquent. We do understand there's situations where there's errors that are made sometimes in reporting, what we're trying to get at is where there's negligence and where vendors aren't complying with the sales tax. This also provides that the tax commission will waive the 1% fee that they charge us for collecting the tax if we identify a vendor that's not, that's delinquent in their tax and that for the additional state sales tax that's collected on that vendor, that they will remit to us, we'll get 3/4 of a percent payment from them on that state sales tax for the work that we've done. And so this program just enhances our ability to help enforce, you know, working in conjunction with the tax commission, but to help enforce our sales tax.
And Craig, I think it's important, the distinction that you made, that everybody's going to make an error here and there, especially in the area of sales tax, it's a complex tax and there's a lot of differences in definitions and when it's applicable and when it's not. That's not what the city's concerned about, but it's the habitual offenders, let's say, those who are purposely not paying their sales tax, the city would like to pursue and if people become aware of businesses that are not properly collecting or remitting sales tax, they can contact your office.
Absolutely.
And if they become aware of businesses that are selling into the city and there's concern that perhaps the use tax by the end-users is not being submitted, you will not be able to pursue those businesses outside of the city area, but you can at least refer them to the state of Oklahoma, is that correct?
That's correct and any contacts like that, they could send through the council offices, directly through our office. Our city treasurer has the primary responsibility for revenue collection for the city and he manages this program and so contacts the city treasurer. We've got an audit program where we can, we've got auditors that work for us that can go out and do sales tax audits, we can make direct contact with the tax commission, so any information that a citizen has of that nature, they can provide to us and we'll certainly follow up on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dave. Amy?
On AF, on the, this'll be the Third Amendment, the agreement with Okura on the MAPS-3 Implementation and Coordination Agreement for the Coeur d'Alene area, what's the formula? I guess we're taking money from the Parks Convention Center and Streetcar to increase the limit by 400,000?
Right, we've asked Urban Renewal to become involved in those two projects, they want earlier task for, and the reason we are is because of a potential hotel on the convention center site, so we wanna make sure that we, we can't take it for a convention center site and then use it for a hotel at a later time. And the same thing on the acquiring the property for the hub, for the Santa Fe Station, maybe at some point in time we wanna put a, you know, some, a sundry commercial use like a restaurant or a coffee shop or something like that and we just wanna make sure that we acquire those in the proper mode so that we can later use those for those type of agreements, so that yes, it would be taken out of our regular funds that we do out of the MAPS for those budget for the land acquisition part of that and it's a, it may not reach that, for that limit, it depends whether or not, how difficult the land acquisition becomes.
So we're not actually transferring funds, we're just increasing the limit and it's just in proportion to what, what each project will-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Second, just a comment on AI because I've seen some debate back and forth on the editorial page of the Oklahoman about this, taking 153,000 and converting our water taxis from gasoline, our resolution says converting from gasoline to pollution-free electric. I just wanna comment just because I see this debate, I think it's important to remember that this terminology really is not true, there is no such thing as pollution-free electric and we should probably avoid that kind of terminology. In terms of what, what gives you the least carbon footprint, it really depends on what part of the country you're in, in terms of this debate between what would be better, an electric car or a natural gas car? Well, it depends on where your electricity comes from, because that electricity comes from somewhere and in Oklahoma, the majority comes from coal, which would, which would leave you with the largest footprint. So to convert to electric in a place where the majority of the electricity is coming from coal is not necessarily giving you a net decrease in your carbon footprint. Now, there are other reasons why this may work better for us, it's gonna be quieter, it'll be less pollution in the water, and maybe cheaper for us, but we're just deferring that pollution elsewhere and I, so I just wanna make clear that the people are raising good points, that this really should avoid pollution-free electric.
I agree, when I read that myself, I thought maybe we were overselling it.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's less polluting in the downtown area, certainly, and we're transferring, we're reducing the pollution at the power plants to some extent by the environmental restrictions applied to those power plants by the federal government. It's not quite as simple as transferring 100% to the power plants, having that increase their footprint. There's some adjustments that need to be made by the virtue of how that fuel is consumed and what steps are taken to protect this city-states from the pollution, so it's, it's not quite as simple as some of the environmentalists would make it appear.
I just, right, it's just a lot of taxpayer dollars, it's $153,000 of taxpayer dollars and then, you know, coal is subsidized by the taxpayer as well, the majority of that coal comes from, we're bringing it into Wyoming while we're shipping out natural gas from Oklahoma elsewhere, so it's, it's more complicated than I think we make it appear.
Okay, Councilman Kelly?
Yes, actually I have one other item, which is H, and I believe there are representatives here in reference to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program and I don't know if anyone from staff is here, but this is a, almost a $5 million project that, that we had Bennett through the, through our committee and I've received several calls from individuals because I think there was some misunderstanding to the public as it relates to where these funds were going to be directed in reference to, toward 7 and the actual income requirements that was going to be, that are part of the funds. To the, to the developer who has received the, the funds for the development, by no means is just directed to them, but I think that if, if I could get staff to give just a brief explanation in reference to the moderate, middle income and the mixed income use of the funds that are required under this, under this grant, is that would be you?
Yes, sir. Matt Gabrielson, Planning Department. Your question, I think I heard is you're interested in the income levels of the-
Several people have, have contacted me in reference to the, the income level of the, the development itself. There's been a lot of people who have, have kinda cried out to the fact that a lot of these funds are being used and those individuals who would like to live in the area are not able to because of the pricing and I just wanted to make sure that there was some transparency to those individuals who were listening this morning to understand that there is a mixed income, or at least there's supposed to be, in reference to these units and as I understand that there are 250 units or 249 units.
That's correct.
And out of that 249 units, 38 of the units are-
Thirteen, 15%, 15% of the total units, 38 units is the count that are qualified as NSP 3 units.
Could you explain what NSP 3 units are?
NSP stands for Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This program is dubbed NSP 3, it's a, it's a round three, it's a third act of Congress making these types of funds available for stabilizing communities affected by the housing market downturn.
And where this, and so, so people will clearly understand, this is not our money.
It's federal dollars.
Right, okay.
Yeah, four and a half million dollars are invested in the project, it has NSP 3 units, total project costs is fluctuating because of some difficult development challenges, but it's in the, in the range of $35 million for total build-out. The proportional share of NSP 3 funds, or the federal funds, relates to the proportional share of units. So there's 13% of the funds are NSP 3 funds, 15% of the units, so we're actually getting a higher proportion of units to, the dollars invested are NSP 3 units and they have income restrictions, a certain number, 31% of the total federal funds invested have to go to house persons who are 50% or lower of area median income. That represents about, between 11 to 13 units, depending on the total end-up project cost. The balance of the NSP 3 units can go up to 120% of area median, however, there's a rule for it, anyone served whose 80% or lower of area median income has a separate rent structure, so the 50% or lower population has one rent structure, 51 to 80% income households have a different rent structure and those between 80 and 120 have a third income, or rent structure. And the balance of the units are also the developers intending to make the balance of the units more affordable than the, the local market, so all units will be below-market units, rent-wise. There's no income requirement on the non-NSP 3 units, but the developer is seeking another type of HUD financing, mortgage-backed financing and HUD is aware and wants a mixed income, below-market complex, the developer has the same sort of ethic, so we think it's a wonderful opportunity to do what other developers are saying can't be done and we wanna do more of it, providing, you know, workforce-type housing downtown.
One other question, there is a statement in the, in the memo as it relates to retail development?
Yeah, there's a concept for mixed use, which will have a retail component possibly and that represents, has contemplated about 8% of the total project cost, it'll be ground, floor, it'll run around, run along Sheridan Boulevard.
So of the 4.5 million dollars from the NSP, some of those funds can be used towards retail?
It cannot.
Cannot.
Absolutely prohibited, housing only.
And this would have to be for 20 years, is that right?
20-year affordability term, yes.
Okay.
We'll be responsible to monitor for that.
Okay. All right, I think that made clear of some of the concerns that some people had, had had in reference to it.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, what, what price point would you look for on the price per square foot for rent on the 15%? Is it less than a dollar?
It is less than a dollar, yeah, it's, so it's between 90 and 95, depending on unit size. All units are gonna be at around, or the average, I think, is a dollar 20 for the, for the total complex, average downtown is a dollar 30.
Thank you.
Councilman, you had some other items you wanted to-
I believe the, the other item is, is R, which is- I believe the other item is R, which is a partnership, or at least an agreement, between the City of Edmond, the Oklahoma County Commissioners, and the City of Oklahoma City. It relates to a resurfacing off of 150th and Anderson Road. If there's anyone from staff that I could ask a couple of questions in reference to Eric, my first question is that, how do these programs get initiated? Was this an initiation from the county, or was it from the city, or the City of Edmond?
I actually received a phone call from the City Manager of Edmond, inquiring about the City of Oklahoma City's interest in a joint project. Obviously, we're interested, and we facilitated from there.
Okay. Our funding is from the GO bond, is that right?
It is.
And this was one of the areas that was, had been identified in the propositions?
This would be more or less unlisted funds, so these would be funds not allocated to a specific project.
Okay. So when the equation is broken down in reference to who pays for what, what are we paying for?
We're paying for one-half of the material cost. And so since this is a shared road with the City of Edmond, the county will do the work. The materials, when we do a typical city-county agreement, the city pays 100% of the materials, but since it's shared, we're only going to pay 50% of materials. Edmond is going to pick up the other 50%. So in fact, I mean, we're actually just paying a quarter of the total cost, if you consider that labor is usually about equivalent to materials. So we can complete a mile of road for about a quarter of what we would do it on our own.
So in some of these projects, because there was a recent project that was just completed on Britton Road, and it was a county-city partnership. I would like to know, is it possible, then, if we are able to save funding that has already been identified for the city to complete, and we have the assistance of the county or another municipality, can we start looking at the possibility of creating bike lanes, then? If we're saving money that we would not have to pay out for the totality of the project, is it possible that we could look at the funds that we're saving to integrate a bike lane on some of these roads?
I would say it's possible. Most of the projects that you see us completing now are resurfacing projects, so adding bike lanes would require widening the road and more right-of-way. That's not currently in this equation. And the opportunities that we have widenings, I think that's probably something that we can look at. But I would just mention, the bond issue, the estimates are increasing. We're being challenged daily on making the projects work at the funds that are available. So, you know, we'd like to strike that balance to where if we can, we will. But it's still going to be quite a challenge, because right-of-way is usually one of the more expensive items of a project. Bike lanes will need more right-of-way.
And the other point is that this was not a listed project, this was an unlisted project. So the funds that we have in unlisted projects are very, we guard those a little bit, because we only have so many. We have more flexibility with them, but we don't, we have limited dollars.
You say we do have some flexibility, though?
Well, we have more flexibility with them, but we have a lot of needs for those dollars also.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. Do you have one other item, Councilman Kelly?
The other item is A.G., and I think someone from Parks in reference to a project that's being funded by the Thunder Community Foundation.
Good morning. Yes, sir. The Thunder Foundation has offered to fund the renovation and resurfacing and other work at basketball courts at Pitts Park, and there's a proposal before you to accept that donation today.
Was it any reason why Pitts Park was identified?
They requested an inner-city park, and specifically requested Pitts Park. So we agreed to bring that forward to you.
Okay, and so this will be putting in new outdoor basketball?
No, sir. Resurfacing existing.
Existing courts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all?
Well, no, sir. The resurfacing of the courts, some fencing around the courts, and new nets and goals.
Okay.
And that's all, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Wendell.
Yes, sir.
The reason why I asked was because we had some challenges in some areas and some parks, and this was one of the parks. And it was more issues of behavior. And as we were looking at this whole concept of our parks in Oklahoma City, I was kind of concerned if there would be opportunities in reference to some of the inside facilities as far as the rec centers that exist, that tend to be getting more positive results from the children in the area, in the neighborhood, as far as programs at the rec centers. So that was my concern, and that's the reason why.
Pardon me, sir. We certainly do have indoor sports. However, with the outdoor sports that are available to the young people at all times, they can use those courts when the recreation center might not be open.
Yeah.
But we do have indoor opportunities as well, yes.
I understand that, but my concern was that there has been a lot of behavior problems on the outside of some of these parks, and this was one of the parks that had been identified. And I was just trying to see, was this just something that had been recommended from the Parks Department? More than gracious in referencing anything that we can receive from a private donor, and especially the organization as the Thunder. But I was just trying to make sure if the selection process was made by who. So they make the selection?
Yes, sir.
We are gracious and accepting, and I just wanted to find out. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we call some citizens up to speak to item AJ, I'd just like to take privilege, I forgot to mention it. I'd like to make a comment as Ward 3 Councilman, to thank the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association, the Friends of Northwest 10th Street, and Mr. Don Sen for their generous contribution of monies to purchase two barbecue grills for Harlow Park. Harlow Park was refurbished within the last several years with a grant that was put through. Thank you, Wendell, for your staff for facilitating this and for the work you do in Harlow Park. Harlow Park is one of those challenged parks where there's been some questionable activity going on, and one of the best ways to dispel darkness is to shed light. And these neighbors are shedding light by trying to make the park more usable for folks who have good goals for the use of our public property. So thank you, Wendell, and thank you, Friends of 10th Street, Windsor Forest, and Mr. Don Sen. With that, we have several people who have asked to speak on item 6 AJ. I'll call them up in the order that the names?
I was out when you asked for individual comments on individual items. I have one, if you?
I'm sorry. Hold off on my introduction for AJ.
Just a second.
You run.
It's on item 6 I. It has to do with the resolution approving an Oklahoma Historical Society sub-grant. I just wanted to take the opportunity to mention that the current Executive Director of Preservation Oklahoma, Katie Fiddle, is going to be our new HP person here on staff. She comes up to work on Friday. She's absolutely wonderful, extremely well-qualified, big shoes to fill, but she's going to be, I know she's going to do a great job. As a director of Preservation Oklahoma, our main concern, we're very pleased to see that she's going to be with the city, but our biggest concern is trying to find a replacement for her. That's been a very difficult task already, and she hadn't even left yet. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to tell everybody that that's happening, and we'll see her, I'm sure, before the, or she on occasion. She's very, she's delightful. She knows her business, very well-educated and experienced in the preservation field, very reasonable. I think she's a welcome addition to the city staff.
Thank you, Councilman White. Moving on then, item AJ. If you would, when you come up, state your name and your address and address to council. First item, first person, Jack McMahan.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. It's my privilege to come before you this morning, but let me start off with an interesting statistic, and that is during the last census, there was an indication that approximately 1 in 5, slightly more than 1 in 5 citizens of this wonderful state, suffer from some serious life disability. That may be mobility, as in my case, limited vision, limited hearing, or developmental disabilities. As a member of that community recently, I tried to engage in helping this city extend its already incredible efforts to expand Oklahoma City as a wonderful place to live by developing an idea that we could make one of our city parks' experiences accessible. We've done amazing things of making facilities accessible, that is, that we can get there, we can get in there. But under Title II of ADA, there is a notion of program accessibility, which is the notion that whatever reason someone went to a facility could be built upon and could then be made accessible. Chairman of the Board of our company, Mr. Peter Hoffman, is here. He has agreed to support this effort, and together we feel that making a city park program accessible is a wonderful opportunity for the city. In recognition of that, we have decided that we would like to design, build, and complete improvements to one designated park, Martin Nature Park, and once completed, turn that over to the city. We are asking this morning for the proposal to develop that concept to be approved by the council. The final plans have not been drafted. We are building a vast community of people who are stakeholders in that, members of the City Parks Commission, members of the disabled community, members of botanists and other ecologists throughout the state, to get a best practices study on how to achieve those results. So our proposal is just to develop that plan.
Thank you, Jack. All right, next up, Peter Hoffman.
I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, I just was, I was going to help answer any questions you might need. I'm Peter Hoffman, one of the founders and Jack's partner in this project, so whatever we can do to help. And keep in mind, this is only just a concept, once again. We will spend the next two months or so working on the actual proposal that will then be given to you all for approval, which will be identified in every possible way that we can.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to point out, at this particular time, a follow-up on Peter's comment, that this concept will be subjected to several levels of approval at the city before we adopt anything out there. And I think there's a firm commitment on everybody's behalf to keep the idea that it's Martin's Nature Park, and we want to keep the nature in that park, and at the same time make it as accessible as it can be made accessible. So I think this is just the first step in a fairly long journey, and then I suspect they may even have some public hearings to solicit public comments as they go forward. And then the Park Department will consider it, the Park Commission will consider it, and then it will come to council. So there's a number of steps where there is going to be a review and approval before anything's actually done out there. And I think the concept is great, but I think the devil's in the details, and now it comes to the really hard part, is putting together a project that will make it accessible but still retain the nature in Martin's Nature Park. Thank you.
And that's our intent as well, to work in a collaboration with all the groups. Yes, sir.
Can I just ask you, just because we're going to talk about trails here in a minute, and I've noticed that you're going to have suggestions for trail improvements, can you give us some tools that would be considered in improving trails?
Currently, the trails in that park have some obstacles. There are some several steps and some areas of slopage that are making it impossible for someone with mobility challenges to engage those trails. There are very effective ways of leaving all of the kind of nature elements using a natural surface to refine some of those ways so that you can navigate around those obstacles without fundamentally changing the location or shape of those trails. We plan to do that. There are actually three components of the project, trails being one of them, which enables someone to get actually into the park and really experience kind of the solitude, the discovery, the mystery of nature. Two others include the location and development of an accessible treehouse, which adds a remarkable experience feature in the park. And then thirdly, to add communications and information systems, some of which would be electronic communication systems, to enable someone to navigate those trails more easily, more safely, but also to unlock kind of the story of what's going on out there, to really enhance the experience. So it's not just trails, but trail surfacing, trail accessibility and design is critical.
Thank you.
And as you contemplate this, one other item that might be helpful, it is our intent also to raise, make uncommitted endowment fund with this gift of this improved park facility to the city, whereby we would create a pool of capital that would then help the city with upkeeping the park and having more money to make it as great as it can be on an ongoing basis, not just on a one-time basis. So we think that's important as well.
Thank you, Peter.
To Dean's question, that I believe the trail from the parking lot to the main building is accessible, and it's sort of a mesh-like thing where the grass grows through it, but yet it's a hard surface that would allow somebody who is disabled to use the trail also. The idea probably to be expand the network of trails, and there may be some trails that just simply aren't suitable for this, and we'll have to eliminate those from the program to go forward.
Vice Mayor? Have we, do we have any type of study from any consultant in reference to our parks as it relates to handicap accessibility as far as the parks that we do have, the trails or any of the equipment, the usage of the equipment in the park or the trails?
Sir, we, of course, when we do a project in a park, we always make that project fit the current ADA guidelines. That park has had some work, that is, Martin Park, has had some work in the last few years to increase the accessibility in the parking lot and the accessibility to the main feature in the park, the Nature Center Building. And of course, the facilities inside the Nature Center Building have had renovations as well. But we have had assessments, yes, of the ADA compliance throughout the park system, and we use that as our guide for compliance.
So are the parks that we have, are we upgrading those parks to ADA accessibility?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are. The bond issues that we've had over the last few years, and the '07 as well, the most recent bond issue passed, all have funds in them to upgrade parks to meet ADA requirements.
I've had an opportunity to look over the emails that we received, and it's my opinion, based on what I've seen so far, is this is a very reasonable way to attack a very difficult problem. If you look at parks, I mean, if you want to take one, that's going to be difficult to make sure it's handicap accessible, probably Martin is probably the one that has the most challenges of any. And I, my view is that this is a very reasonable way. Not to discount the concerns that people have expressed in these emails, all of them appear to be valid to me. It is a wonderful place. I mean, in terms of its biodiversity there, it's a wonderful place. But it ought to be wonderful for as many people as we can make it wonderful for. And it seems to me this is a very thoughtful way to do it. I appreciate you bringing it forward. I would remiss not to welcome the mayor of Nichols Hills to our midst today. Peter Hoffman, he and I serve on ACOG, as colleagues on the ACOG board, and enjoy that, sitting next to each other once in a while.
I do, too.
And I appreciate you being down here today.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's our pleasure to try to offer this to our community. We think this can have Oklahoma City even become a, this can be a beacon for the rest of the country, actually, to see something that people talk about but have never really done much of, and this could really be something special. And if we all work together, I think it could be a rare blessing for everyone.
That is actually, Peter, what I wanted to add to this. I had the opportunity to meet with Jack four months ago, maybe at times flying, to begin to talk about this project, and I'd like to just say how proud I am of how far you all have come. It's an amazing opportunity, and Jack has shared, I think with most of us, some of the other examples around the country where this kind of a treehouse structure has been built and what it has done, not just for the just for the disabled community, but for the community at large, and to provide a venue for everything from senior meetings and card games to weddings. And, you know, I think we are, once again, setting the bar very high in Oklahoma City for the types of things that we can do. And to have this have developed as quickly as it has as a public-private partnership is just another great example of the way we make things happen in this community. So thank you for bringing this forward and providing us the opportunity to share in creating something that's really, really special.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you all. Bowery Boudreau.
Thank you for your time. You guys have already addressed a lot of the things I was going to bring up today.
State your address, please, for the record.
11108 Northwest 130th Street, Yukon.
Thank you.
And I am the representative for the Friends of Martin Park, president of this group that has been a nonprofit organization that has protected and loved this park and provided supplementary needs to it in Louisville city budget cuts for about 27 years. And I represent people who have used the park, who know the park, basically the nature community. I don't want to take a lot of time, because I spoke with Wendell yesterday, he has reassured us that this is just a concept proposal. I did speak at the Parks Commission meeting as the representative. I just wanted to draw attention to the resolution without asking someone to rewrite the resolution. Is there a way that we can enter into the record that we have submitted some written concerns? The resolution says a representative of Friends of Martin Park spoke when the Park Commission considered this matter on August 15th and expressed a commitment to working with Wilderness Matters to preserve the flora and fauna of the park as the project develops, which is true. However, we did submit some specific concerns as well, and we just wanted to know if those could be entered into the record.
I don't see why not. I mean, I think the group is proposing this, has been very open, very willing to accept those sort of things. And as it comes forward to the Parks Commission, some public meetings, I'm sure you'll be invited to, that it's going to be a collaborative, joint effort.
Right, and everyone's in support of making-
Because nature in that Martin's Nature Park, I don't think there's any doubt about that, because otherwise, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be worth the trouble to make it accessible if it wasn't as nice a facility as it is now. And I want to thank you for your efforts out there, that Friends of Martin's Nature Park have been a real force in keeping that place nice. Thank you very much.
And I think that everyone is in favor of making it more accessible. We all love nature, and we know Jack is a former outdoors person, and we want him to be able to get out there as well as anyone else with mobility issues. But there have been some local biologists who have expressed concerns about making every, you know, all 3.5 miles of trails accessible. There are some challenges. We have a urban wildlife that lives in that area that's already pressured by, you know, development coming up next to the park. We want to make sure that this is done carefully. And while it's a great thing that they've gotten things done so quickly, which is rare sometimes when bureaucracies are involved, we also need to consider that we need to take our time and look at some of the wildlife impact in there. We're very concerned that a thorough environmental impact study is conducted.
I think we share your concern.
Okay.
And exactly how it'll be implemented, I'm not sure at this point, but there is a, I talked to Wendell yesterday, a strong feeling in the city that what we do out there has to be compatible with the overall objective and purpose of the park is.
Yes. Wendell's been very forthcoming about letting, keeping us-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Donna Mackowitz.
Good morning. I'm Donna Mackowitz. Address 10813 Blue Fox Drive in Edmond. I'm a school teacher, so I rushed here, so I'm kind of out of breath. I'm here just to caution you that this project is going through so fast, whereas it's a good thing, we're not taking into consideration that in one year, you can't really understand the effect that it will have on your nesting species. The pollution that we are experiencing now with the increased traffic and construction off of the Turnpike hasn't been looked at. At Martin Park, we have such limited funds and resources that we're doing the best we can with what we have, and this is going to be an improvement. But going to do this whole project in one year as a naturalist, I don't see that feasible. I'd like to slow down a bit.
Well, I don't mean to be critical of my colleagues, but once it hits the city, it'll slow down significantly.
Even though it says in your resolution that it will be-
I'm afraid that the process that we're putting in place, it will be a slow process intentionally to make sure that all the considerations are taken into account.
Okay. I was just wondering, because on your resolution, it says project will be completed in 2013.
Well, that's a nice idea, but I can guess, I can't guarantee it, but I would guess we won't be there in 2013.
Okay, I thought maybe that was set in stone.
No, it's not set in, because none of the review has started yet, and the plan is not even available yet. So, you know, it's impossible at this point, without a plan, without approvals, without study, to say it's going to be at a certain date. Now, I think everybody would like to see it done as quickly as possible, but given that fact, we're still going to move slowly.
Okay. And will the council consider that maybe at this time, even though this is a great gift, that maybe the best thing for Martin Park is not Phase One to put in the treehouse? We have other very-
Nobody's approved a treehouse yet.
Oh.
It was an idea that was thrown up in the air, but the city has not approved a treehouse at all, nor has it even seen a design of a potential treehouse. It might not be a bad idea, but we want to wait and see what the facts are before that decision's made.
All right, so as I understand it, the city is accepting the gift of improvements to the park and prepare what will go on?
We haven't really been given the gift yet.
Okay.
In theory, we've accepted it, but there's no money there yet. And actually, I can assure you that from this point forward, its progress is going to be less than speedy.
Thank you for that. Okay, that's mainly it. I'm just worried that it's going too fast and we aren't looking at the preservation of the park. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Torg Fadham.
I'm Torg Fadham, 11316 Way Cross Road, Oklahoma City. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard this morning. My wife Sue and I live in northwest Oklahoma City, about four miles from Martin Park. We are members of the Friends of Martin Park, but we're not on the Board of Directors, and I'm speaking on my behalf, not representing the Friends. That said, we do support the comments and concerns of the Friends of Martin Park. I should also mention that my, our son Tim has worked part-time at the park since last year, but our involvement goes back for 15 years before that. By way of background, we've been frequent visitors to Martin Park ever since we moved here in 1996. I'm there several times a week to jog or walk, and I volunteer for a few hours on Wednesdays and for special events. So I've enjoyed literally thousands of laps and thousands of miles on the great trails there. It's not only our favorite park, it's our favorite place in Oklahoma City. We're very enthusiastic about the great prospects that Wilderness Matters proposes for the park. We do want to make sure, as has been discussed, that the inputs from the Friends of Martin Park are considered throughout the entire process. Personally, my top priority is to avoid having the trails paved with any hard surfaces at Martin Park, while achieving the important goal of improving accessibility, as was discussed with Mr. McMahon during the August 12th meeting of the Friends of Martin Park. My understanding is that a resilient, joint-friendly surface can and would be used to improve accessibility while maintaining a natural look and feel. I want to recognize that cities made terrific enhancements to parks in recent years. Part of that has involved paving over a significant amount of trails in northwest Oklahoma City, including the two-mile loop around DeLisi Park, and also the one-mile loop on the west side of Bluff Creek Park. So personally, I would hate to have hard pavement on the nature trails at Martin Park, even if budget pressures later on make that seem desirable as the project moves forward. So in summary, I think this is a win-win situation, a great opportunity for a great partnership between the city and Wilderness Matters, and I hope that the Friends of Martin Park will be actively involved if the project moves forward. Thank you for your attention. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for coming down, sir.
Thank you.
That's all the citizens that I have received a card on that wish to speak. We have a motion, a second, on the consent docket. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and the consent docket is approved. Next is the concurrence docket.
Move the subject and move the other.
There are a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations? Councilman Mars.
Any.
Why don't you go ahead, sir?
This is a sanitary sewer project, and I'd like to get, I don't need it now, city manager, but I'd like to have somebody bring me the plans forward on this. I have two concerns. The 101st Street and Mantle Court to 66 in council is not exactly a straight shot, so I'd like to see what that routing is exactly. And the second part of it is Willshire from Silver Crossing to August Hills Boulevard. We're getting ready to do a street widening project on Willshire. And I'd like to make sure that there's some coordination of all of this, so we're not involving while we're doing the paving over there or after we do the paving, certainly. So if somebody could bring me the plans on that and go over it with me.
Be happy to do so. Any other considerations? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and the concurrence docket is approved. Items involving individual consideration, first one on the agenda is item A1, which happens to be in Ward Three. Is the applicant present? Has anybody signed up? This is for an ABC Two out at the outlet malls. There have been no protests, the planning commission has approved it.
I have a vote, yes.
We have a motion to approve, this is a second. Second by Dr. Shadid. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you. Item A2 is another ABC Two, this one in the Breeden Hospitality area. Has anybody signed up?
Yes.
Is the applicant present? Unless you just want to speak, if there's no questions from the council, I would like to summon, extend a motion.
Sure.
We have a motion, and a second. Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Moving along, item A3 is in Ward Four, PUD 1454 from PUD 924. Councilman White.
I noticed that on the application, there are protestants here, protestants at the planning commission, is anyone here to speak on it? Any protestant? Is the applicant here? Why don't you come down, let me, let's talk a little bit about it. Your name and your address for the-
88901 Legacy Crossing.
I don't have any concerns, great concerns, about the use of the excavation part of it. I guess what I'm more concerned about is what you plan to do with it afterward. Under the current zoning, what would the use be made of it?
Residential?
What?
Residential housing.
Under the current zoning, if you didn't get residential, at what? One house per acre, what kind of density?
I think it's, yes, sir, I think it's one house per acre.
And when this is finished, what are you going to do?
When the dirt's removed?
Mm-hmm.
I think I told the planning commission I'd have it developed within 12 months.
At one house per acre?
Yes, sir.
20 miles from any city services?
There's no, if you go on here to Old Road, there's a road, there are entrances that'll be paved all the way around.
I understand, but you're 20 miles from water, sewer. I don't know how far you are from police.
I understand.
I don't know how far you are from fire. You plan to develop it?
That's what-
At one house per acre.
You want me to, would you rather two acres per house?
I just, I don't know, you know, I may have voted for this to be rezoned to one house per acre at that location at some point in my life. If I did, I regret that, because I think that kind of density, that far from services, is really beyond what the city can be expected to continue to sustain.
It's going to be, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
It's going to be, I mean, I think we have a five-year, and then with another five-year option for the dirt, and it's going to be 10 to 15 years away before we develop it. And at that time, if the density calls for five acres, I have no problem putting five acre tracks per house or however.
Would you consider bringing it back? I mean, I don't have a problem with the soil excavation. I mean, that's, I live in double-A zone property, and you have to understand that a lot of things can go on in double-A, kind of living near industrial property, but lots of things can go on in agriculture zone property. I just don't, I'm just, have a hard time believing that this is appropriate by today's standard for residential zoning that dense right now. Would you consider amending this to bring it back at the end? You say it's five to 10 years. If you're right, five to 10 years from now, it'll be, it would be okay to develop it that. It is on Harrow Road, and that's a main north-south artery, does have some things going for it, so I don't deny that. But would you consider coming back for approval?
At that time?
At that time, at the end, at when you're finished?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure how to craft that kind of amendment, but I bet Mr. Teener can tell me.
The thing is, I really wouldn't want to develop it in one acre tracks if there's, if it's not-
I understand, I understand. Well, I did not, I didn't presume that you would want it, except for a long time with that ability to develop it, and you decided to excavate it rather than develop it. I just, if you're agreeable with that, and we can figure out a way to amend it so that it requires a secondary approval when it reverts from an excavation project to a residential project again, I'm all in on this.
We could, right now, it has, it has two components, really, the excavation of the dirt, which has a 10-year time limit.
Understand.
Then it allows residential after that.
Right.
We can craft some wording that would say, at the end of the 10-year time period, they would have to come back for rezoning to allow the residential.
But you could even put in it like, I mean, because it is something he owns now, that is, that right to develop it as RA. You could put some language in it like you do in contract language, that he'll, it requires approval of the council, and the council will, and that approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. I mean, so he doesn't totally give up his rights. It's that standard contract language and things like that. I just think that we ought to look at that.
We can-
And if he's willing to do that, obviously, the short-term value of the property is the excavation without any question. And I know there's a need for dirt, I see different places out there where, but there's one big one there on I-40 where they've taken a whole side of the hill out, so.
We'll get with the municipal council's office and craft some wording that we can put in there and-
Okay. Well, based on that, I would move approval subject to the technical considerations that the planning commission put on, which you'd already agreed to those.
Yes, sir.
And drafting some language that would ensure that you come back five or 10 years from now and get approval again for the, that dense of zoning.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. So I move approval subject to all the things I've said.
Motion to second? We do. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. Thank you. Moving along then, item number four, PUD 1459, 15321 North Rockwell from double-A to PUD 1459 Ward Eight. Councilman Ryan.
Thank you, sir. Brian Cooney is the owner's representative, and he's been involved in some of the negotiations with adjacent property owner. And I think we had one person signed up to speak on this project.
That's correct, sir.
And I think we let him go first, and then let Brian, if he can, maybe shed it some light on the concerns that the property owner has out there. The property owner's got some very serious, I think very valid, concerns. However, I could find nothing in the proposal that would give us any basis for turning it down. So I'd like to hear what he has to say.
The gentleman who signed up, Leroy Esri, if you'd come forward, Leroy, and give us your address also.
Hey, my name is Leroy Esri, and I'm here with my wife, Rosely Esri. I live at 7225 Northwest 150th Street, and I've lived there for 17 years. And I'm here to talk about the PUD 1459. My experience with the zoning commission has been, you know, all in the last two months, and it's very limited, and I found I didn't know anything about what was going to happen. and is very limited and I found I didn't know anything about what was going to happen. But in reading the OKC Plan 2000-2020, it stated that the changes in zoning will be compatible with adjoining land use. And I know there's probably a lot of interpretations of that, but I don't believe what is being planned on this is compatible for the following reasons. The adjoining land use of the south 160 acres of Section 5, except for the 16 acres being rezoned, have been developed on lots with a required minimum of five acres, with the average being 10 to 15 acres. The developer is planning to build 4.6 houses per acre. No other development within two miles has this many houses on 12 acres of land. And this, in my opinion, is not compatible. The other reason, the increase in density per acre in the PUD totally changes the country style of living, which attracted the current homeowners, most of whom have lived in their homes for more than 15 years. This is not compatible. Houses in the 1200 to 1400 square feet size backing up to houses which average in the 4,000 square feet range will significantly cause a reduction in property value for the other houses with these houses in their backyard. This, I don't believe, is compatible. The using of land that cannot be developed in the calculation to arrive at the maximum number of houses that can be constructed on a tract of land does not solve the problem of houses being too crowded together with yards being too small. The variation to minimum lot size should not have been granted to promote this abuse on this PUD. That's the main thing I'm concerned about. I just don't think this development is compatible with what's been done on 160 acres of land already for several years. A neighbor of mine, two houses down from where I live, applied for a permit on his five acres to add an additional house for his brother, both of whom were retired, so they could live on five acres, was turned down. And I find it difficult to understand how putting 58 houses on 12 acres is, you know, can be approved with that. And I would like to maybe make one suggestion here for the planning commission, is that notice should be given to homeowners of contingency and rescheduling dates, or that homeowners should be advised upfront that they will not receive such notices, so that they can check with the planning commission on a regular basis to make sure they can keep up with what's going on. I appreciate you all letting me come here today to speak and I understand this is a very difficult and very technical and very legal issue and as such, I know it's way over my head, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, Brian Coon, representing applicant. A couple of things, we did not get a variance on lot size. This is an R1 development and lots are 6,000 square feet or more, so we didn't get a variance on that. The density is 3.57 per acre. We have a 3.3 acre park, Green Belt, in the northwest corner of this property, so we've, we're going to try to maintain that pond and actually enhance that pond that you see on that property. It's actually a little bit further north of what you see. This whole area, I mean, and in accordance with Oklahoma City plan, it is in conformance with the plan. I think on your previous item, you just discussed whether it has sewer and water. This does have sewer and water and it has adequate fire protection. And those are the three things that we try to hit when we want to do a residential development that brings it into conformance. Immediately north of this property, you will be seeing some layout soon for some more residential. On the west, east side of Rockwell, just barely north of this, there's new Deer Creek Elementary School. And if you were to zoom that drawing out, you'll see that there's several other residential areas already being built on just north of this and to the east of this. So again, we're trying, like I said, we're trying to keep as much of the nature, a natural part of this land, which is the pond and the trees in the northwest corner, and utilities are available. And I did meet with Mr. Esri yesterday, had a great meeting. We have on the west side, there'll be two houses that butt up against his property and I told him we will be putting up a site-proof fence when those houses are built. That west side will be phase two and that won't be built on until the property to the north is developed, so we'll have sewer. So, but sewer is available, water's available, and it is in conformance with the plan, so.
Are there any questions of Brian or Mr. Leroy?
I did just have a question. Did we actually turn down a zoning case to disallow somebody to-
Before my time on the commission.
Bob, are you familiar with that?
I think that that was a variance for two houses on a five acre tract. I think it wasn't, didn't come to council, I think it went to the board of adjustment.
Okay, but the distinction here is that you did not need to get a variance for the density?
No. No, we have, no, our lots are 6,000 square feet or above, but the city always wants PUDs now instead of straight zoning, so we did it at a PUD, but it's straight, it's straight R1. So we did not get a variance on lot sizes.
That's right.
Brian, there are four TEs in the-
Four TEs, we agreed with all of them.
Would you consider putting a fifth TE in there for a site-proof fence along the west side?
That's fine. At the time of construction of those houses, you bet.
Okay.
Definitely.
That would maybe mitigate things a little bit, a site-proof fence along that property.
Yeah, I have a question. Bob, a number of years ago, we passed an ordinance on lot sizes that had a step down of, if you had a large lot size on one plot of land, you couldn't necessarily go all the way down to, say, a 6,000 square foot lot on the adjoining property. You familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Does that apply at all in this situation here or not?
This wouldn't, that wouldn't apply because this property, or the adjacent property's zoned agricultural. That applied when you were abutting other residentially R1 zone property and it set a cap at 7,500.
Correct.
It wouldn't apply in this case.
Would not apply. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Bob, before you sit down, this project complies with all the city ordinances and the policies that cities use in the past.
Yes, this property's been recommended in the comprehensive plan as urban growth for, since 2000, so.
And second question is on the number of dwellings per acre. That calculation was done in consistency with what we've done in before?
Yes, the standard R1 is seven units per acre and they're at half of that, so.
They're well within the limits there.
Yes.
You know, these are always difficult cases when we have, the city's expanding to the northwest and we've got double A property out there. People have lived out there for years and all of a sudden they see a development going in. But I'm afraid that's the path of development we have in the city. And if you look back at our city history, most of the city at one time was probably double A. And we overcome that as we grow. Now, we can make arguments about sprawl, whether it grows profitable or not, but we have a couple of issues here. The property owner has a right to develop his property as long as this doesn't adversely, seriously adversely affect the neighborhood. And secondly is, I think, the fact that this complies with all our ordinances gives us no basis for turning this down. And as serious as I think Mr. Leroy's objections were, I think we have to go forward.
Councilman Greenwell?
Yes, and I agree. This is a difficult item to look into because I understand the existing homeowner's concern over having larger lots as well as larger homes and then all of a sudden, new developments coming around that are right next to it, much smaller homes, much smaller lots. One point I would, and what I'm leading to, is I think it would be wise if the planning commission did look at possibly modifying some of the rules, such as the exemption as it relates to agricultural zoned areas are not subject to this buffer zone question, just for my benefit to gain a better understanding. Now, having said that, just because a home is smaller doesn't mean that it's going to create or attract people that are going to be problematic to the area. You know, I think nationwide, there's a trend towards smaller homes compared to what we saw as recently as 15, 20 years ago. So just because you've got a denser number of units or homes in a particular development doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to create problems for the existing homes. But I do understand those homeowner's concerns with the larger homes, larger lots, without some kind of a buffer. I just think it would, it's time that we looked into that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how to proceed now because we've inserted a fifth TE that's not in our document. Bob, can that be done?
Yes, you can make the motion to approve subject to that addition and then he'll submit an amended document that we'll get to the clerk's office.
It's on, it's on the record somewhere, when that, that phase is developed, there's going to be a site-proof fence along the west property.
We'll get that wording from him.
Yes, sir, Leroy.
Leroy, if you would, please come forward with the microphone because we can't hear you on TV. Thank you, sir.
He stated that there would be two lots backing up to mine. The plat that I have received from the planning commission shows four lots backing up to my property. I didn't bring the plat here with me, but it shows four instead of two.
Okay, but the whole west property line will be, will have a site-proof fence. So any of those lots that back up your property will have that site-proof fence?
I'm sorry?
The amendment we're adopting, TE5, provides for a site-proof fence along the whole west property line of that addition.
Okay.
So whether it's two lots or four lots, there'll still be that fence there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, subject to that amendment, I would move approval.
Can I just ask one, just to remind, this is right by the Francis Tuttle Tech Center.
Well, it's a little bit fur-
A little bit north of Kilpott.
Well, and it's further east as well. It's on Rockwell.
Yeah. Okay.
On the east, west side of Rockwell.
Can you remind me, what's the closest police and fire station, just from a-
Well, the police station would be the Hefner Breathing Station. Fire station would be probably-
Fire station number three, which is on MacArthur and roughly between Hefner and 122nd Street.
About 158th Park.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we had a motion. Was there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Here, motion is second.
Further discussion?
Now, further discussion.
The, how did water and sewer get there in the first place? How did it get out that far? I mean, that'd be like having water and sewer out in my house. How did it get out there?
Part of it was, there was a new facility called Paycom, developed their headquarters building on Memorial, and part of that work was to provide sewer and water out there. And it was, had this second benefit of this development went forward, we'd have that facility.
I can check on that for Mr. White. My guess is that it has, probably goes back to when the Surry Hills lagoons were deemed to be, need to be replaced and some interceptor was run back in the late 70s, early 80s to Deer Creek Plant from the Surry Hills areas, how the sewer got out there. The water in that area, it has just been natural progression as development has progressed.
And I apologize, Councilman Shadid, it's due south of this development, Francis Tuttle is. I didn't want to mislead you.
This is just a good example of what the problem we're asking for problems. What do the roads look like? Are they two-lane roads? Are they traffic signals on every corner?
No, there's, they are two-lane roads. We also did a traffic study and that's what caused some of the delays also.
I mean, so what the next thing we're going to see is we're going to see some big deal to make the roads wider and-
There's already, it's on 2007.
Money on the traffic signals and we're skipping over hundreds of acres of property that we ought to be developing before we get that far out.
It's not that far from developing. It's a mile from Galatia, which is a developed property. There's a lot of property developed north of there.
Well, I was wrong. We're skipping over thousands of acres of property that should be developed before this happens. I don't want to vote for it, I mean, there's no reason. I mean, under the way we've done it in the past, we stuck water and sewer out there and we're, and our rules prevent a real serious buffer from being created because we don't have a step down. We can come in on little tiny lots next to five acre tracks and bigger. I mean, we just got to have a better plan than this. This plan doesn't work. I mean, this plan is driving this kind of activity and I know we're under, the OKC plan's under revision, but we've got to come to grips with this. We cannot sustain this over a long period of time. It's going to take us down in terms of what we have to charge for taxes, in terms of the cost of services, in terms of the quality of services. I mean, it's just, we, you can't keep going this far out and developing property and expect to be able to staff them with the same police department you had 20 years ago. This doesn't work.
Any further discussion from the council? We had a motion in the second, we're in discussion phase. Seeing none, please record your votes. And it is passed eight to nothing. Moving on, SPOD 660, 4321 Southeast 59th Street, from C3 Community Commercial to SPOD 660, Ward 4. Councilman White.
Are there any protestants here? I don't have a problem with it. I'd move approval.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments from the council? Please cast your votes and it is approved. Item 6, SPOD 674, 825 to 829 North Portland Avenue, from R1 single family to SPOD 674, Ward 3. This is a, just a correction, this business has been in operation for a while, is to bring a zoning in conformance with the use of the land. Has anybody signed up? We have had no protest at the planning commission. I move for approval. Oh, I can't, somebody else please. Thank you, David. Motion is second. Any questions? Please cast your votes and it is passed. Item 8B. Ordinance for final hearing for approval of SPOD 667, 330 Southwest 104th Street, from AA Agriculture to SPOD 667, Ward 5. Councilman Greenwell.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone here? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
This is currently zoned as agricultural and we have proposed to, this is about five acres of land, so we have proposed to change the zoning of the one acre abutting the main street to office use and the rest of it will be for residential lots.
Yes, sir.
And it has been approved from the, you know, previous-
Yes, yes, sir. If I may just add to that, the original proposal, I believe, included up to 26 lots and based upon some concern from the neighbors in the area, the developer has decided to reduce that number from 26 down to four. There is one existing facility that'll be converted into a commercial area at this point. And so while there were protests initially based upon the revised plan, we've only received two phone calls and one of those said that he is okay with this revised plan. The other one voiced a concern with one of the units being considered a commercial item. This is facing 104th Street, which is pretty well-developed throughout all of South Oklahoma City and it's just a, well, less than a half a mile from the city of Moore. So you've got commercial development on Santa Fe and then going back west, certainly within a mile, you have Western Avenue, which is greatly developed. And then again, all along 104th Street, it's, it's been more and more commercial development. So I would recommend approval. It came from the planning council with unanimous approval or recommendation to the council, so I would-
Second. Yeah, motion is second. Any questions? Seeing none, please cast your votes and it is approved. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Our next item is item HC, ordinance on final hearing relating to animals, amending Chapter 8 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code. We have motion is second. Anybody signed up? Any consideration from the council? Please cast your vote. Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Item eight D, ordinance on final hearing regarding the schedule for next summer.
Move it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Item eight E, ordinance to be introduced and set for final public hearing September 11th, 2012, with final adoption September 25th, 2012, relating to aviation. Director Cranenberg is here to give us a brief overview of this particular item. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Good morning. Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Department. Item eight E is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 10, which is the aviation chapter of the municipal code. Specifically, we will be updating the definitions in Section 1016 and introducing a new Section 1026 as it relates to an off-airport rental car concession fee. This item was approved at the last Airport Trust meeting. Resolution was approved by the Trust to move forward to City Council. I do have a short presentation for you this morning, and again, the public hearing on this item will be on September the 11th. There are eight rental car companies that currently operate under a concession agreement with the Airport Trust, and for several years, those companies have paid a 10% commission fee to the Airport Trust on total gross receipts. The fee is for access to the rental car customer base that the airport creates. Off-airport companies access this same customer base but do not pay a concession fee to the Airport Trust. We don't have any quantifiable data because off-airport operators do not report their transaction days on airport customers, but we can estimate that there's about 2% of the entire rental car airport business that the Airport Trust is not getting the benefits of the concession fee. And there are numerous airports nationwide that do require off-airport rental car companies to pay concession fees. The purpose of the ordinance is threefold. One is to capture the business revenues from off-airport companies that do business with airport passengers. We want to define terms and establish the concession fee that is the same as the on-airport rental car companies. But most importantly, what we're wanting to do is create equal terms for on- and off-airport rental car customers, or companies, excuse me. This is something that the rental car industry in Oklahoma City has advocated for some time. So this is a parity, this is a fairness, this is an equity issue. The fee is equal to the eight on-airport rental car companies. The 10% again is the same, and it will only affect off-airport rental companies within a 10-mile radius of the airport that are responsible for the fee. The 10 miles is something that has been historically in our concession agreements in the past, because as you know, we do not have, we have some fleeting issues at the airport, and so there are several of the companies at Will Rogers Airport that do take these customers to off-airport rental car locations. 10 miles was historically used as an area where we could capture this business. The off-airport companies are not responsible for remitting a fee if their customer does not come directly from the airport, that is, they're not transported from the airport, or if the customer is a local customer. With any ordinance introduction, we have to do a financial impact statement, and while it's not the money that's important here, it's the parity between all the companies, both on- and off-airport, we did estimate some revenues regarding this issue. So for fiscal year 2013, we're estimating a concession revenue to the Airport Trust with a 10% concession fee of $123,822. Again, that's roughly representing approximately 2% of the entire market. That completes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions. And again, the public hearing is on September the 11th.
Thank you, Mark. Questions from the council?
How many companies, you say, off-airport rental? How many companies are there?
There's one national brand, which is off-airport, which is a large company. That is Advantage. It's a subsidiary of Hertz, although recently I understand that Hertz is in the process of selling Advantage off, but they are operating here in Oklahoma City. There are a couple of other smaller companies, which over the last couple of years we've had knowledge of, that have, their businesses have benefited from the lack of ready-return spaces at the airport, and so a couple of the rental car companies on the airport have transferred some of their customers to these smaller companies so that they can obtain rental cars. With the advent of the consolidated rental car facility, which is now under design and the eventual construction, the word is getting out, we're getting inquiries from larger national companies, and also at least one of the smaller companies, which is getting some off-airport business, that they are interested in participating on-airport and maybe even possibly in the consolidated rental car facility. So we're getting interest nationally from larger companies and also smaller companies in the rental car market in Oklahoma City. I think that's even more important, why we need to have this off-airport concession fee, because it may be that not all companies will be able to operate within the consolidated rental car facility that we're designing. Even after we construct it, there may be other companies that come involved in the Oklahoma City market. So again, this is a parity issue, simple between the off- and the on-airport companies.
So you proceed, at the present time, there's only one company?
There's one national brand. There are, we identified about 15 off-airport rental car companies. Now, most of those don't do any business at the airport. What we're trying to capture is the airport customer that's transported from the airport to an off-airport business for the purpose of entering into a rental car transaction agreement. We believe that it's important that that off-airport operator pay a concession fee that's equal to the on-airport concession fee that our companies pay on-airport, which is 10%. Again, it's parity, it's leveling the playing field if you were to put it in the rental car business companies' mouths. And on September 11th, we will have the Chair of the Rental Car Consortium at Will Rogers that will be here to speak favorably towards this issue.
So what would be the, what is the radius of the proximity from the airport property lines to where one of these companies would be located that would fall under this proposed concession fee?
Within 10 miles of the airport.
Within 10 miles?
Within 10 miles. There are some off-air...
In any direction?
Pardon me, sir?
In any direction?
In any direction, in the radius. Again, so far, we've only identified a couple of other companies of the 15 that we notified by letters early last week that this ordinance may impact them. We've only heard from one, and he's one of the ones that has benefited from some of the overflow from the rental car companies that we currently have at the airport.
Any further questions? Okay, can I, in a motion, this is for introduction?
Second.
Your motion is second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and it will be moved on. Thank you, Mark. Next on our agenda is a public hearing regarding derapitated structures. Is there anyone signed up, anyone wishing to speak on any item under the derapitated structures? Seeing none. Your motion is second. Please cast your votes, and they are declared derapitated. Public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Do we have anybody signed up? Is there anyone here to speak on any item under 8G, unsecured structures? Your motion is second. Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Item 8H is a public hearing involving a resolution authorizing accepting of a joint award for the 2012 Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant totaling $497,937.
This is an annual grant that we receive to benefit the Police Department?
Who am I? Second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so done. Item 8I is a public hearing, resolution adopting amendment to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget program for capital improvement projects and directing of the filing. Doug Dollar is here to give us a quick briefing on this item.
Morning, council. This year, we began the year with a healthy operating reserve of $63.8 million, which figures out to be about 16.5% of our general fund budget. Our policy is to maintain that reserve in the 8% to 15% range, so this puts us above that range. In years past, we've brought forward amendments to spend that operating reserve to bring us back within that range of our financial policies. Our financial policies also recommend that when we have non-recurring revenues like fund balance, that we use those for non-recurring expenses such as capital type of items, not for operations, and that this amendment would be consistent with that. So again, we'll be doing $8 million as a transfer from the general fund into the capital improvements project, where projects would be funded throughout the city. So I'd be happy to take any questions on the amendment.
Questions for Doug.
Just because I haven't done the math, what does that bring us to?
I'm sorry, yeah, that puts us at 14.1%, so a little below the top end of our range. 15% is the top end of our range, that puts us at 14.1%.
Great, Doug, thank you very much.
So the projects have been decided, or...
Not to my knowledge, they have not been decided. I think the...
We'll be bringing back a list. The Public Works Department has been meeting with some of the councils to get input on their projects, so we'll be bringing back a list to formalize that.
But we wouldn't necessarily be restricted to resurfacing?
We talked about resurfacing in some drainage projects. It's the council's decision on anything we'd like to do beyond that.
What is the status? My understanding is that there's a possibility for federal funds to possibly address some resurfacing. For example, what's been brought to me would be resurfacing May Avenue, but I understand that in a month or so, we may receive some funds which would make that possible, which would, we wouldn't need to use these then. So just in terms of timing, can you help me understand?
No, but Eric can, and Eric will be here in just a minute to answer that question. There are some ACOG dollars that get reallocated, and Mr. Leroy's on that committee, and Mr. Leroy probably knows more about that than I do, but here's Eric to answer. Eric, the question is, are the ACOG funds and the timing of those might be available?
The review of the projects that are in the list is in the next month, so we should be able to know by the end of September, early October, whether the project we submitted for on North May is going to be received or not. So simply, we're just at a matter of having to wait on their decision.
Well, I would hope before I have to commit to my project, that I get it, that I hear about that?
Or if it does get funded, we can come up with an alternate project, council.
Like perhaps sidewalks?
Again...
That would be a possibility.
Again, that would be up to the council if they want to expand into that area, but certainly, it is a possibility.
Councilman, I think that's why we want to look at a list of alternate projects, whether they're projects that we can afford because bids come in better, or in this case, I think we just have an extra list of alternates so that if it's awarded, we can move forward with your second list.
I guess I would just ask the council, last year, you know, we were committed to resurfacing, and we weren't allowed to do anything outside that. I would just ask the council that, to consider allowing each councillor to decide what maybe is most needed for their ward, and be able to extend that outside just resurfacing, to be able to consider other Public Works projects that are needed in our particular wards.
I think it's a good idea, except that we need to be really careful that we don't make political decisions, and make decisions based on facts that indicate there's some deterioration or some specific problem we're trying to solve. I think in the list of concerns of our citizens that we got from our citizen survey, street conditions was number one. There wasn't anything that I recall, and there are a lot of sidewalks, but we need to be careful and listen to our citizens as we go forth.
And Pat, that really goes to the crux of the matter. If you define the street as just the pavement for the automobiles, then I agree with you, but there's more to a street. If you're considering the complete street, the sidewalk is part of it. And that's why in our Bond project, every place that we resurface, we add, or that we do improve this, we're adding sidewalks.
I've made the same argument, that the sidewalks ought to be considered part of our transportation program, and as such, should be maintained by the city. I've been unsuccessful making that argument, but I think we'll continue to make it. This lack of success doesn't bother me.
Thank you.
I do agree with Councilman Shede, that it would be helpful if we could have some flexibility in allocating those dollars, so thank you.
The idea is to move this forward. One of the things that Eric were trying to do here, last year, we approved $8 million to be divided among the wards. Fourth Street resurfacing, there was a considerable lag from the time that we decided that we wanted to move in that direction until actually we began to turn dirt on the projects, and some of those projects have not even been started yet. This is an attempt by the Public Works to expedite that process if the council desires to so move in that direction, and to give the councilmen in that ward, my word quite frankly, one streets resurfaced for automobiles. And so that would be where I would go, but the idea was to give the freedom to the other councilmen to use it for capital improvements as they saw fit. Was that not, did that fairly stated, Eric? So that's where we are. Do we have a motion? Do we get a motion? Your motion is second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next up is the Volcanal Ride of Light permit for the Oklahoma and Arkansas Chapter of Alzheimer's Diseases. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that? If you would, come forward, give your name and address.
My name is Sarah Sherry, and my address is 2416 Northwest 55th Street, I in Oklahoma City. I'm the Walk Coordinator for the Oklahoma-Arkansas Chapter, Central Oklahoma Office of the Alzheimer's Association, and I'm here today about the Oklahoma City Walk to End Alzheimer's, which is our nation's largest event to raise awareness and funds for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. Our walk will be held September 15th at the Bricktown Ballpark, and we will have festivities opening in Mickey Mantle Plaza at 8:30 in the morning, with our opening ceremonies and Promise Garden ceremonies starting off at about 9:35, and the walk starting at 10:00 AM. Registration is open online right now at OKCWalk.com, and registration is also available on the morning of the event.
Thank you very much.
May we pass?
We have a motion is second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Next up, Item L, resolution approving the preliminary report on the Maps 3 Trails Project Phase One, the West River Connection, and I believe Mr. Don Douglas is from Triad Engineering is here to speak to this.
Your preliminary report was part of your council docket, so you can see that the trails itself are going to be truffled in width. Minimum rideaway, in most cases, will be, okay, will be 50 feet, but in a lot of cases where the trail cuts off property to the river, we've included that part of it. Our project really starts at Council Road and proceeds over to Meridian to tie into our existing trails. We pretty much follow, as you can see, by the yellow line, the north side of the river, because basically the south side is floodplain, so we've pretty much followed that part, staying as close to the river as we could, and going up, going back to the east, you can see we go up and around, and continue to basically go around Crystal Lake so that we tie into that part, so that there is some parking there, and we come on down and across 15th Street, back down by the river, then on over through and up above our sediment pond, which is there for the river, on down right behind the industrial area there, and under and back to where we tie into the, under the bridge on MacArthur, and then on over to where we tie, whoop, I'm sorry, where we tie into our trail on the east side of the river, on the south side of the river at Meridian. Now, there's another project that's involved, that will eventually build a pedestrian bridge across the river to tie the two trails in. So we've made a temporary trail that we'll be able to go up and around the, onto the bridge, existing bridge, and then come across and back into our trail system. So that basically is our layout. We're in, as far as the estimated construction cost is around 3.7, the rideaway acquisition, and there are some 27 parcels that we'll be acquiring, and our next step obviously will be to prepare the rideaway plans and submit them to the city so that we can begin that part of the project. During that also phase, we will be looking at further connections and maybe points to access to the trails themselves. That will come, and we tie in again on council to another contract that takes it on up to Overholser. So our estimated construction cost, including rideaway... So our estimated construction cost, including right-of-way, is around 4.86. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let me just back up to the big picture a second. In terms of trails, when we, during the MAPS-3 campaign, when we talked about trails, it was mentioned that MAPS-3 would virtually complete the master plan. I think that was on the Mayor's Magazine Show and many other places, that we would virtually complete the master plan. What, with our current projections, what percent of the master plan will still be unfunded or unfinished with execution of?
Councilman, I think we'll be about halfway through with the master plan based on the MAPS-3 projects. We have the River Trail that we're looking at today, we have a trail that goes around Lake Draper, we have the I-44 Trail, and then we have the, what's called the Airport Trail.
And we're considering, or we're continuing to go after federal dollars to supplement the trail efforts as we go forward, just as we have in the past.
Is that, that's a possibility?
I think it is, as long as they continue to be funded through the federal highway acts. That's how we've done a good part of our trails to date, have been through that method.
So the amount that's unfunded or unfinished, would it be fair to say that it'd be about 60 miles?
I don't know the number offhand.
Is there a need, I guess, is there a need to update the Trails' master plan? Would be one question.
Yeah, very possible.
Okay.
There is, Councilman, a Trails Advisory Committee that Councilman Greenlaw and I sit on.
Right.
That has been discussed, but the philosophy, and Wendell might want to come in and speak to this from the park side, because he's very much involved. The idea has been to finish out the master plan as it currently exists, and this component right here is a part of that Trails' master plan and gives us connectivity from Hefner to Overholser and down to the river. And then there's Eastern hookups going out to Lake Draper also, so it's a significant advancement in completing the overall Trails project.
So I guess that's, of the 60 miles that are unfunded or unfinished, we feel like this is, this is a higher priority than those 60 miles.
Some of the other areas that are not funded are, for example, some trails that were to run along the Turnpike, and then there's also one I know on the South Canadian River that was with that, and these were considered to be more heavily utilized than some of those other trails.
What about, like, the 19th Street Trail?
I can't answer that one.
So we would expect this to be heavily utilized, this segment?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
Councilman, I might point out that this trail system on the east connects to the River Trail that goes all the way to Eastern at that point.
Okay.
When they finish the two, our contract and the next, it will connect to the All Forward's Trail, which goes on up north. So this is a connection part to two existing parts of the trail system itself.
Right, and remember also it'll connect with the park, go through the lower park, go over the Skydance Bridge, connect into the upper park, and get you into downtown proper.
One area I guess I'm worried about is just west of Crystal Lake, where the Sands Motel is. Can you, Sands Motel is there? My understanding that's a very high crime area, sparsely populated. What can you tell me about what will exist, what amenities, if any, will be along the trail, maybe to try and protect those that utilize the trail?
And that's one of the things we'll begin to look at in the final part of the design is lighting and access. We did look at the area you talked about, and we even talked one time going on straight through it and decided that that was not the thing to do, so that we came back down to the river itself, so that there will be some separation along the river itself for that.
Would, I mean, is, are there funds for water fountains, benches, trees, trail mile markers, emergency phones, anything like that?
Let me start from the bottom of your list. The signage which we have along the river itself will be matched as we go along the trail to the west, so the signage will be there. We're looking at access points, probably from an emergency standpoint as much as anything to do that, and as far as water fountains and that type of amenities, we don't have that many utilities in the area to be able to do that, but we can look at areas where we create benches, and we will be in access points of what we're talking about.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
We need a motion?
So, Lou.
Second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Next up, we have item M, resolution approving the master plan report project dealing with MAPS-3 sidewalks.
Carl Baldishweller, Smith Roberts Baldishweller is here to take this off.
Good morning. Again, I'm Carl Baldishweller, Smith Roberts Baldishweller. This is Gary Nolan, he's our associate, one of my associates that has been the project manager on this project. We were hired by the city to develop a master plan in accordance with the MAPS-3 ordinance of 2009, which was to establish a series of strategically placed sidewalks on arterial streets near public use facilities within the city of Oklahoma City. We began this process in February, working with city staff, the MAPS-3 staff, to develop criteria to analyze various segments, numerous segments that we would get either by request or by visual inspection. Gary Nolan is going to go through our process of development of our master plan document.
Thank you. On this first slide, what we show here is what we've completed as to date. We've done our video and visual surveys of alignments, we've ranked the alignments, we determined top-ranked alignments for the 6.8 million construction budget for approximately 425.68 miles, and then we submitted our master plan report to the city. How did we get here? We started back in February with our kickoff meeting with the MAPS department. There was two tasks that we needed to develop for this master plan. The tasks were to establish the criteria for the rating and ranking for the alignments, and then also to pick out and develop the alignments to be rated. Our first task was to determine the priority of the criteria, or the criteria and its priority. This was developed for the rating and rankings of the alignments with input from city staff, input from citizens, input from the MAPS-3 Trails and Sidewalks Subcommittee, through a series of meetings and presentations each month, and then the criteria as shown on this slide and is in your packet, was developed and approved at the subcommittee meeting on May 23, 2012. The approved developed criteria starts with the highest priority being proximity and connectivity to schools. Then it was followed in descending priority by desired paths, proximity to transit, population and employment density, pedestrian accidents, proximity to hospitals, parks, and libraries. We, then, as you see further down, we have what we call the second path, and that's based on constructability, connectivity or connection to existing sidewalks, existing ramps, existing right-of-way, how it impacts our alignments that we've picked, and then visible utilities on each of these alignments. We started, the second task was alignment selections, and this also started back in February, kind of simultaneously, and what we did on this, on the visual surveys, is there's locations included that were requested by user groups, committees, city staff, along with other locations that weren't covered by user groups and committees. As I show in this slide here, we started out completing over 400 miles of visual surveys, which included over 200 miles of video surveys on arterial streets. During this time of our drive-bys, we had a data sheet that we collected information on each arterial noted, visible utilities, slopes that might be impacted and may need retaining wall, obstructions, culverts and storm sewers, creek crossings, railroad crossings. We also were looking at desired paths, since that was one of our criteria, the ease of construction for the sidewalk, and other comments that may impact the construction of the sidewalk. During this process, we came across, you know, when we started doing our visual and our video survey, we came across several alignments that we excluded because when we started doing this, we discovered through the surveys, there's existing sidewalks. We also discovered that there were several requests for projects that are already on the 2007 bond and paving overlay projects, so therefore they would have sidewalks constructed. By initial observation, during our first pass process, we noticed that, you know, it's low population density, no proximity to a public facility, and it's located in a rural area, so therefore those were excluded. Then we also had locations where we were asked to investigate that's within ODOT right-of-way, and visiting with ODOT, their policy is to discourage pedestrian traffic within highway right-of-way, so we excluded those. After completing the surveys and the ranking of over 270 miles, with the exclusion of roughly 64 miles, we have 130 alignments that we came up with, that we ranked based on the approved criteria that was developed. This leads to 116 miles with an estimated construction cost of $31.4 million. On this slide here, of the 130 alignments, the top 31 alignments, as shown in the report, make up the 6.8 million construction budget within the MAPS funding, and it's 25.68 miles. Now, this is based on, you know, this is kind of a conservative estimate. Once the report is approved and we start doing the surveying and doing the development and the design, you know, we're feeling, we're hoping it'll come down a little bit. There's an additional 98 miles that we show in the report, but that's located on an arterial street, but it's what we call the opposite side of the 130 alignments that we've rated and ranked. MAPS-3 construction budget of 6.8 million for sidewalks isn't the only city-funded projects for sidewalks. There are additional projects that include the construction of sidewalks through the bond issue and overlay, and what I, what we did here is we got another figure, and it's kind of hard to see, but we tried to overlay the top 31 with the bond issues to show that, you know, that there is more than just this money available for sidewalks. But during our process of doing this review, as I mentioned earlier, we found several locations that were, we were asked to investigate for sidewalks that are part of the bond issue. One of them was Independence Avenue from Northwest Expressway to Northwest 63rd. That's part of the paving overlay project. Another one was Northwest 23rd Street from I-44 West to Bethany City Limits. That's a bond project. Another one was Morgan Road at Southwest 29th Street, which is part of the bond project. Northwest 23rd Street from Portland to May Avenue is a bond, and then Kelly Avenue from Northeast 23rd Street to Northeast 50th Street is part of the bond program. So just to conclude, that every dollar spent to construct sidewalks using either the MAPS-3 construction budget of 6.8 million or the 2007 bond and overlay project will benefit the community and citizens of Oklahoma City by making the city safer and improving the walkability of the community. At this time, I'm open up for questions.
Questions from the council. Yes, Councilman Ryan.
This is more of a comment than a question, is when the subcommittee signed sidewalks and the MAPS Oversight Committee considered this resolution, they both groups felt very strongly, we didn't go far enough. We've used up our budget. However, there will have been some changes in the specifications, the city's got their little wider sidewalks than we originally anticipated, the anticipated costs have gone up. We have a very conservative estimate to get 6.8 million, and there may well be some additional dollars available, but I understand this is well below what we originally anticipated, but we, I think we had a good old estimate maybe originally, and then there were some impacts, various kinds of things that made the costs go up, and we were looking at $50 a foot for sidewalks, and part of it is because sidewalks are more complex than people thought originally, where you have to cross driveways and drainage facilities and all, it does eat up a lot of money. But there was a very strong feeling that the city council and the city as a whole should devote a lot of time and attention to the construction of sidewalks.
And let me just add to that, I happened to sit in on the meeting with the Oversight Committee that Pat was referencing there, and they were very passionate in their desire that we in the council know that they thought sidewalks were of utmost priority, and they wanted as many miles of sidewalks put in as fast as possible, and Tom McDaniel said, "Well, do you have any suggestions on how to do that?" And their basic strategy was throw it up to the council and let us solve the problem, so...
I'm understanding budget items is more important to you, and I said, "Yeah, not understanding budget items is not a lot."
So they're very passionate in wanting more sidewalks done, and they wanted Pat to convey that, and he did an excellent job of conveying those feelings. Any other comments? Yes?
They're not the only ones passionate about building sidewalks. It was one of the most popular items in the MAPS-3 projects, and many people are disappointed that we've come up so short. Again, like we talked about in the Trails, during the campaign, we talked about 70 miles of sidewalks. My understanding is in the first Trails and Sidewalks Subcommittee meeting, they were told, "Well, it's going to be more like 50." Very first meeting, 20 miles disappeared. Now, after this study, we're down to 26. And we can weave this into a cohesive narrative about MAPS, but there, I think there has to be more vetting prior to the vote. I mean, I think there's a common theme among many projects, but I want to talk about this master plan. The first thing I would ask is how much time, when you finished the plan and you presented it to the Sidewalks Subcommittee, how much time did they have to review it and then comment on it?
Councilman, actually, this plan went back, they presented it, and that month, the Subcommittee decided that isn't what they wanted, so it was about 90 days of time from the first time that they presented a master plan till this time. So there was a considerable amount of time that they got to look at the alignments.
Now, you told me that they just voted on the selection criteria 90 days ago in May, right?
No, no, they put together the selection criteria before that, but the first time that Smith Roberts brought the report to them, and here's how it shook out, they decided, "Well, maybe we need to change some criteria." So there was a lot of conversation within the Subcommittee, and it wasn't just thrown together and cranked out.
I guess that, I'm getting different feedback. My feedback from Subcommittee members is that this was, this final breakdown of the top 31 projects was just kind of presented to them last week, and they were told they needed to vote on it that day. There was no time to delay it by a month and review the rank ordering, and it needed to be voted on that day. Is that, that's an inaccurate?
No, as far as, as far as that final report, that is true. It was presented to the Subcommittee, but it was based on the criteria that they'd already reviewed.
Right, but we know from previous, some of this, there's some subjectivity, right? There's some, and it can come very close between a Pennsylvania Avenue and a May Avenue, or a this or a that. So they signed off on some criteria which has some subjectivity in its nature, but when they actually saw how it shook out, which projects we're going to do, which projects we're recommending get done with the 6.8 million, they basically saw it that day and were asked to vote on it that day.
Right, we went through a process that we felt was, I think I'll use the word quasi-scientific, like you said, some things are subjective, but what isn't subjective is proximity to schools, existing sidewalks, connections, things like that. I think that the constructability and those kind of things might be subjective, so it wasn't just pick and choose. It was subjective as far as how they ranked things, but then it was put in a spreadsheet, and the alignments fell as they did.
What I want you to do, this is my, is to treat all the Subcommittees the same. If this is, if that's what you would do with the Convention Center Subcommittee, which you wouldn't, but if that's what you do, fine, but... But I don't think that it's good policymaking. I don't think, I mean, these people are taking time out of their schedule, right? They, you've worked on it six months, and I appreciate all your efforts. We've lived here all our lives. I mean, we see who walks down Pennsylvania Avenue, who walks down May Avenue, and where the schools are. I mean, so they, Neighborhood Alliance has done citizen surveys, they've done, put in a lot of work in surveying people, where do we want to put sidewalks? And to give them, you know, to put this in front of them and say, "Okay, now you got to vote on it," and with no time to digest it, no time to integrate all the research that they've done over the last couple of years into that final, just that, to me, doesn't seem, I don't know what we would have lost by delaying it by one month, let them process it, and get back to me about, "This is what we think in Ward Two should be, we think Pennsylvania Avenue would be a higher priority than May." That's, that kind of hurry up and make decisions, I don't like. I don't like, and I don't think one month is going to set us back. We're more than two years into this. And so I want to make decisions. You're asking me to vote on it today. I want maximum input from these people who spent tons of time working on this.
Okay. Councilman Morris.
I didn't hear that. What I heard was that they established a list of locations for possible sidewalks with the MAPS III money. A criteria rating system was put together. It was rated using that system. The committee was able to look at the results and adjusted the rating criteria. Did I hear that in your presentation? That the, that the scoring system was adjusted based on comments from the MAPS III Subcommittee to look at the locations that were selected. A new list was established with the new rating system, and that was put in front of the MAPS III Subcommittee. Stop me if I get any of this wrong, but, and so they've looked at it numerous times with different rating systems that proved, that brought out different results for the sites that were selected, and what they saw this last month was the end result of that. Now, are you suggesting that it go back to them so they can tweak the scoring system again to get the sidewalks you want, and then come back forward? Whatever, whatever end results you're going to get, they're going to get it in a certain month, and they're going to be asked to vote on it in that month and bring it forward. So I think it's a little unfair to characterize it as it was just thrown at them, and they didn't have any choice. I heard that they've been looking at it for 90 days with the, with different scoring systems.
Well, I tell you, I mean, they're sitting here shaking their head the whole time you're talking. Why don't we ask them? We have some members of the Subcommittee here. Why don't we ask them to come up and address?
We have, we have one member who's signed up. If you wish to speak, please fill out a form and come forward and fill it out, so we can keep this thing going in the right direction. I'll call on Scott Buxton first.
Scott Buxton, 1442 Northwest 36th Street. I serve on the Oklahoma City Parks and Rec Commission, and also on the MAPS III Trails and Sidewalk Subcommittee. Councilman Morris is correct, and so is Councilman Shadid. The fact is, we were given the criteria to review. We were not given the actual installation, proposed installations to review. They gave us the criteria, and we reviewed it a couple of different times, but there were some significant items that were left out. For instance... With regards to the terminology "master plan," I think that that's something that we need to get a little bit clear about, because what we were initially told in our committee was that there were going to be a master plan proposed for sidewalks in the city of Oklahoma City. Well, one of the key components to that master plan was going to be an inventory of the sidewalks that already exists. It only makes sense that we know we already have before we go forward. We were never presented with that inventory. We were never presented with any type of formal master plan. Therefore, to, and I brought this up in the, in our Subcommittee meetings, comments that, you know, is this a master plan for the sidewalks to go forth? And I was assured that it was not, and I don't, and hopefully it's not, because this is not the criteria that I wish to see used. I mean, I would see, I would like to see it adjusted and be used going forth as far as a citywide plan for sidewalks, but this is not, you know, I would suggest that this would not be a, this was never suggested, or I'm sorry, excuse me for a sec. For this to be considered a master plan for the city of Oklahoma City's future installation for sidewalks, I don't think it is. I never thought it was. I didn't vote for it to be that way. Therefore, you know, therefore, this, to consider this as a master plan for sidewalks of Oklahoma City, I just don't think it's accurate.
Scott, what is it?
I'm sorry?
What is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the MAPS?
No, no, if you don't consider it to be a master plan.
This is a proposal for installations for sidewalks using the MAPS III dollars based on the criteria that we presented to these gentlemen. And that, I think, is accurate. But to consider this a master plan for sidewalks going forth, that is inaccurate. We never considered, we never proposed it to be such as that.
Do you feel, and I'm asking a question, I'm not trying to put it one way or the other. Do you feel that the Subcommittee's, the MAPS III sidewalk Subcommittee's task was to create a sidewalk master plan for the city of Oklahoma City?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. So they gave you what you think the Committee's task was in that thing there.
I'm sorry?
You got a report to spend the MAPS III sidewalk money...
Yes, sir.
...in the report that you're talking about here.
Yes, sir.
I understand your concern about there's not a citywide master plan for sidewalks, but I'm, I was, I thought I heard you say you thought that was the task of the Committee, to create a master plan for the whole city.
No, sir, the task of the Committee was to help decide where the installation of the sidewalk using the MAPS III funds were to be.
And Scott, are you, is the Committee unhappy with the locations as identified for the MAPS?
I wouldn't say we're thrilled, but I mean, we were, this is the criteria that we presented, and it came out a couple of different ways. It said, "Okay, here's, here's what you warned us to, the criteria that you presented to us, and here's what we came up with using the numbers." So we began to look at it, and then it turned out, well, it was a bit, as Mr. Todd said, it was a bit, what did he say, quasi-scientific? Well, yeah, quasi-scientific, because some schools that were remote and were not accessible by sidewalks were excluded. So, you know, and there's a couple other issues that were, that I didn't feel were brought forth, is if a person, if a business has violated an easement by their driveway that was initially to be used for sidewalks, then why do, as, do we as a city pay to have that driveway demolished and then our sidewalk? Why shouldn't they pay for it? Why shouldn't the business owner that violated the easement through their construction of a parking lot or whatever else, you know, why, why are we absorbing that, absorbing that cost?
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
When you voted on this last week, did you understand that it was for only 26 of 70 miles?
I can't say I didn't, because I saw that...
Was that discussed in the Subcommittee?
We did not discuss, well, first of all, it says Phase 1 on our report. So I don't know why we would think that, you know, if it was, if there were not going to be a Phase 2, 3, or 4, why would we just have a Phase 1? I thought that was kind of interesting. But no, they didn't present it in such a way that this is...
And how, how much time did you have between when you saw the top 31 projects and you were asked to vote on it?
Oh, I don't know, 15 minutes.
Okay. So would...
Wait a minute. Now, wait a second.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
You've asked, the segments, the mile segments, or whatever it may be, the actual location on the street...
Yes, sir.
You saw that for the very first time this month?
No, that is incorrect. We received an email document, and we had an opportunity to review. Yes, sir.
You've seen the proposed locations prior to this month. What you're, when he asked you how long you had to look at it, was the concept of this report coming forward with those listed the way they were?
The rank order. Have you seen the rank order before?
I received, I saw it when I got it in the meeting. Now, I had an opportunity to review my email document. I chose not to. That's on me.
Okay, let's...
Can I ask a question?
For Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
The, this top 31 alignment...
Yes, sir.
This is what we refer to as the ranking of where these various sidewalks will be constructed? Is that right?
I believe so.
Okay. So, so with this ranking, I'm just kind of puzzled. How could one ward not be on this list at all except for Martin Luther King and 23rd Street, which was a sidewalk issue that we battled for probably a year and a half as a result of two individuals being killed at the corner of 23rd Street and Martin Luther King? I don't see where this ranking would do anything that we have already done there. And on the other side of this, there's not one other school on this ranking that's in northeast Oklahoma City, that's in Ward 7, that's been identified for a sidewalk. And I would just like to know, what was the criteria based on the geographical selection of these sidewalks that you could have used to, to not identify one school in northeast Oklahoma City in Ward 7 as being a recipient of a sidewalk?
The criteria that was developed was not based on necessarily a geographical location. It was based on the six criteria that was developed by the MAPS Subcommittee, MAPS III Subcommittee, and, and different criteria that we brought up. But we looked at it based on right-of-way, utilities, constructibility, proximity to schools, connectivity, and we, and we applied that ranking to all the hundreds of alignments that we evaluated. This is how it came out. I mean, it was based strictly on those six criteria that we developed and made the second pass based on connectivity and constructibility and cost. I mean, that's, that's how that all shook out. I mean, it wasn't that we were trying to point any one direction. And as far as the estimate for 26 miles, you know, we've used, we've done several of these projects in Oklahoma City in the last few years, and we used our average unit cost to develop these estimates, but, you know, in reality, had we used the low bid for each one of these, it would have been more miles, more mileage. But to be, you know, proper and be conservative, we used the average unit price on several projects that came in in the last few years. So it could be that more than 31 alignments get built.
I'm going to say this, and I, I'm not trying to be, because I don't know what, what criteria that was given to you or that y'all established a criteria. But I represent an area of Oklahoma City that voted very strong in support of this whole project of the MAPS program. And I personally went out on a limb during the campaign and fought for every last one of these projects. And I would be remiss to sit here and not say what I feel as it relates to the complaints that I consistently receive, continuously receive from my citizens. 63rd Street is an absolute disaster for kids who's trying to walk to school, to Millwood, who try to walk to the stores, to the convenience stores on the corner of 63rd Street and Kelly, try to walk to the movie theater. They have absolutely no access to a sidewalk, and it's a very densified neighborhood, and it's continuing to develop on the north side. And there's a multitude of other areas in reference to schools that would just be ignored when, in fact, their parents, their grandparents, were the individuals who went out and voted when we asked for this, this vote, and they supported it. And the records will clearly show you how strong Ward 7 supported this project. And then not to have one, not one, school and one street that, I'm trying to figure out where would it go, because after the two people that was killed there on 23rd Street and Martin Luther King, we finally, finally came up with some funding sources through some grant funds to make the connectivity as reference to the sidewalk there. And, and I, that's, that's my statement about it, and I don't know, I'm not, you know, I haven't talked to anybody on this Subcommittee. So I haven't tried to interfere. I haven't tried to make any personal request in any shape, form, or fashion to, to the Committee or anyone involved in it. But I would just, would trust that there would be a little bit more parity and equitable consideration in reference to the geographics than in reference to the actual need of, of, of different areas. And, you know, at this point, maybe, maybe I can feel a little bit stronger about this proposition, that maybe each one of us should have some input in reference to some locations as it relates to our particular wards. But I trust that the, the process, and, and not to interfere with the Subcommittee's, you know, workings, not to interfere with the engineers. But, you know, when it comes to us like this, is, you know, I have to say, what I know would be the voice of those individuals I represent, and that is, why not?
Councilman Kelly, let me respond to a couple of things. This was put together based upon some criteria that was actually received from this council. You all interviewed on it, is received by the MAPS Oversight Board as we came forth, and it's been through a couple of variations as we've gone down the line. We would have liked to have been able to do more sidewalks. We have options available to us. Let me go over some of those options that are out there. We just talked about fund balance dollars right now. Councilman Kelly asked what the, with the street resurfacing, what that takes us down? It takes us down to 14.1. If we would choose to, we could take a couple, four, three, four million dollars, whatever we'd like to, out of, out of, out of fund balance and bring that number down, supplement this project, bring it forth, and, and when we get down more projects, there will be more projects that, Mr. Kelly, the type that you were looking for. Your projects are there, it was just the priorities that were set up there. There's a $17 million contingency in MAPS III. I'd hate to tap into that at this point in time, but that's out there. There's another $30 million contingency that we set aside because of the substation that's out there. So there is a potential for, for doing more projects. We are hopeful that the bids are going to come in lower than what we've got. Mr. Walder Schreiber talked about it being this mid-range. We think, you know, if these are packaged right, we can get these done under the budget amount and come back with supplemental projects to, to help do more than that that's on the list. That would be the Phase 2 that's coming on, that's out there. We're already going, doing a lot of sidewalks that are out there with the bond project, both on our arterials and both in the neighborhoods when we put those out and do the neighborhoods that, uh, neighborhood areas that we're doing the resurfacing in. We're also pursuing federal dollars and have done that to get additional sidewalks. There's a lot of things going in, in this area, and I understand the frustration by, by the lack of this, but we do have some options that are out there. As if this is a priority by this council, we can go and pursue some of those things that I've, I've, I've just lined out. And as far as the process that's here, we can today accept the report, we can go back and, and put it back to the Subcommittee for further evaluation and put it back off a month, which is, which would be acceptable, too. We do have options before us today as, as we go forward.
Let's, if we could, Georgie Rasko has indicated a desire to speak. Let's hear from Georgie, and then we'll continue the discussion.
Thank you. I'll be right back. Just a second. Georgie Rasko with Neighborhood Alliance, 2206 Northwest 17th Street in Oklahoma City. I just want to express, Mr. Nolan and Ms. Boschberger have worked tremendously with this Committee. We have said many times in our Subcommittee that sidewalks are much, much more difficult than trails, and that we don't envy their job, and they have listened to everything we've said and really tried hard to put that into their rankings and what they're trying to do. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. As councilpeople and representatives of this city, sidewalks are an incredibly emotional issue in this city, and it is part of what really brought people to the polls to vote on the MAPS. So I'm just, want to really caution everyone that we need to look at this, because this is really going to be a trust issue with the citizens of, of Oklahoma City as to what we can provide to them, what we've said we were going to provide to them, and what's going to be the future of other MAPS programs in this city. I'm not trying to overstate what, what sidewalks are, but I hear it every single day in my job at Neighborhood Alliance about what are we going to do about sidewalks and where's it's going to come. I realize as council, I've done a wonderful job of other ordinances that are pre-creating sidewalks through the street resurfacing and things like that, but citizens are concerned about this $10 million that was promised to them through MAPS for sidewalks. And we can't keep combining and saying, "Yes, but you're getting this with the bond issues." They're very savvy. They want to know what they're getting from MAPS for sidewalks. So I just want to say that as a, as a Subcommittee member, I didn't feel like we had the time that we needed to really look at these... that we needed to really look at these decisions. I understand that every single person in this room and every person on that Subcommittee could go in and re-rank them, and we would never, ever get a consensus on what we needed. So somewhere, somebody has to own it and say, this is where we're going to start. And unfortunately, it looks like that might be on your backs. I wish that we, as a committee, had had more time to kind of give some more thought to it, but somebody owes it to the community and to the citizens to really give it the kind of thought that it needs before we put semen on the ground on those sidewalks. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Georgie.
If I could, Mr. Manager, then, given that conversation, could we ask that this be deferred and go back to the Subcommittee and have another look at it?
Is it possible? That's a possible?
But don't expect the Subcommittee to come back with unanimous vote again. There'll be the same kind of division next time we get it, because mark of a good report like this is if everybody's angry we didn't make the right decisions. But I think sending it back, if they want to do it, that's great. I have no problem with that. I think it's a waste of time, because we won't get any more consensus from the Subcommittee then than we've gotten right now. But if they feel the need for it, I have no problem with that.
And we've asked these citizens to give a lot of their time, and I'd like...
And they have given a lot of their time. And, you know, from the standpoint of the committee as a whole, the Subcommittee as a whole, there wasn't, you know, maybe there was dissatisfaction. They didn't come forward and tell us that until this morning.
But I've been hearing it. Let's try to address it and see if we can...
Address what?
Address the dissatisfaction that they seem to be expressing.
Well, there were some satisfied people that didn't show up here.
I agree with you.
Councilman Greenwell.
Yes, this is just a comment from my layperson's perspective on this. The areas in Ward 5 that are identified, I think, are the ones that most of the neighborhood associations that I've visited with express concern. For example, the one along Pennsylvania Avenue going north from 104th Street. That's heavily used by various neighborhoods as the students walk towards Moore West Junior High. And I think they looked at the priorities, how much usage is going on, as well as how difficult of an area. I've walked that area from 104th down to Moore West, and the terrain is very uneven, unlevel, and it actually slopes at a pretty high grade. So even when it's dry and warm outside, it's a challenge to walk down there, but then you add rain and snow and ice, and it's almost impossible. And if we look back and remember, you know, when we're in junior high, that's the time when we almost die, when we have to have our parents drive us anywhere, even to school. So I think the usage in that area is very high, plus Pennsylvania is a very well-traveled street, certainly needs all the assistance. So I just want to come to the defense of the members of the committee. And it looks to me that priorities were used in identifying which areas would be selected first. And again, based upon my discussions with homeowners associations that I've attended, these schools, and they're all basically related to schools, are the ones with the greatest needs. So I don't want anyone to have the impression that this decision was made in a vacuum without input from neighborhood groups, from individuals, from even the council, because I've met with the consultants, it's been quite a few months ago, and shared my concerns as far as what I've been told as far as the problem areas were in Ward 5, anyway. Thank you.
I share some of the concerns about the speed. You know, back when we voted on this, I was not in favor of putting the MAPS election on the ballot at the time we did it, because it wasn't thoroughly vetted. We missed, what if we'd missed the convention center price by 2/3? What if we'd said we're going to build this convention center, and we'd come back and we only have a third of the money to build a third of the convention center that we promised? Well, this thing would be full of the Chamber folks. They'd just be down here beating us to death over that. But we just seem to be able to brush aside the fact that we missed, we went from 70 miles to 26 miles. That's not Carl's fault. That's not your fault. I mean, you don't have any responsibility in that. That's our fault. We didn't vet those projects well enough to know. I mean, somebody should have known that you can't build 70 miles of sidewalks for what we had allocated. Surely, it hadn't gone up that much, only in the area of sidewalks. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. So if somebody on the sidewalk trails committee said the buck ought to come back up here and we ought to saw it, they're right. I mean, we created it. We, those people sitting right here, created it, and we need to find a way to fix it. There is, I appreciate what the manager said about opportunities to do that. There are some other things out there. But I think contingency fund possibility is a strong one, in my mind. Because when you promise 70 miles and deliver 26, you've got some, you have some moral, ethical responsibility trying to find a way to fix that. If it was, if we promised 70 and delivered 66, that's within the, what do they say in the polls? That's within the range of something.
Fit point.
Something. That's in the margin of error. But 70 and 26 is not in the margin of error. It's not even close to the margin of error. And again, I don't blame the consultants for that. They've had, what it is, it is, and they had to do it. And I don't blame the committee for that. I do think the criteria led, we may have all agreed on that criteria, but it led to kind of a disproportionate allocation of the money, as Councilman Kelly puts out, when only one sidewalk, less than $200,000 of the $6.8 million is in Ward 7. There's something wrong with that plan. I mean, I'm not saying you didn't follow the criteria. I'm saying the criteria should have been more sensitive to exactly what he's talking about. Because it was items like the trails and the sidewalks that pulled the MAPS 3 election along. It darn sure wasn't the convention center that pulled it along. If we look back at the statistics of the polling we had, convention center polled in one ward less than 10% approval. So if this was the convention center, we'd only had a third, we were only going to build a third of it, you can count on the fact we'd be doing something about it. We'd all be up in arms about how are we going to fix it? And I think we need to have the same amount of concern and emotion for trying to fix something that was the thing, that, one of the things, that encouraged people to go vote for MAPS 3.
Councilman Morris.
Well, I don't know that I disagree with anything that's been said, but I'm going to use it to get on my soapbox for just a second, because it just, to me, it just reinforces something that just nags at me all the time. ADG and city staff and some people on this council were taken to task when we set the preliminary schedule up for all the MAPS 3 projects on the timing. And we kept telling people, people, it's going to be adjusted. It's going to change. You're not going to get these things done in the time it's going to take. And it's proven in almost every project to be that way. And I just, if the Subcommittees and if this council feel like we need to slow down and make sure the Subcommittee's on all the projects are okay with what's going on, and they have a better insight with what's going on, then I think we need to tell everybody that. We need to tell city staff that. We need to tell ADG that. Because I believe they were given the impression at the very beginning that you've got a schedule, and you've got to stick to it, and by God, we're going to run these things through. And it just concerns me that when some people in the room were saying, to do it right, you're going to have to understand that the schedule's going to be adjusted, it's going to be flexible, it's going to change, projects are going to change, all that kind of stuff, and yet we took so much grief over it early on. And now here we are, and the exact thing is happening. So if the sidewalk committee needs to look at this, that's fine. I don't know why you limit them to 30 days. Send it back to them and say, bring it forward when you have a committee report that says the consultant that we picked, the committee picked them, the consultant that we picked gave us this report, nobody is 100% happy with it, but it's the best product coming forward and send it to council, then send it up here and we'll vote on it. But we can't continually say, stick with the schedule and get everything through, but yet give people the time to have a better understanding and feel comfortable with what they're doing. Because we've got a whole bunch of volunteers on all of these committees that are putting in a lot of time, and I know that they want to feel better about the product they send forward in all of the Subcommittee's. So I just think that if we're going to consistently say, let the Subcommittee's get comfortable with the product before they send it forward, then that's the message that needs to go out there. And not the message that was sent to them in the very beginning.
Councilman Shadid.
I agree with everything that Pete said, especially, I mean, in terms of the bigger picture. My fear is that unless we take a step back, and we may be presiding over the last MAPS, what should be clear from this is that this is one or less lost, or at least defined in the vetting process prior to the vote. And clearly, the vetting process was inadequate, as each, many projects are coming in off by substantial margins. And Project 180 wasn't part of MAPS 3, but it also came up with substantial shortfalls. The trails is going to be 60 miles less than what was talked about during the campaign. The sidewalks is going to be 50 miles less than what it was talked about during the campaign. The four wellness centers are on life support. We have no takers. Everyone cannot pay the operating costs, and we have to rethink that entire project. The convention center is going to come up short. The people just don't know it yet. There was a study that was done on the convention center, done by the Chamber, by the Convention Sports and Leisure, and three years later, it still has not been released to the public. And in that study, it said $250 million is not enough to get to the next tier, to get the kind of conventions that were talked about during the MAPS 3 campaign. And I would repeat my call for the Chamber to release that study to the public. But as soon as we know that there are going to be shortfalls, we need to just own that and deal with it, and talk about it as soon as possible, and the convention center would be one. So that's one. Number two, in terms of these studies that have subjectivity to them, I'm just a little bit gun-shy, because I feel like the biggest shortfall in terms of decision-making was the convention center location. And we hired a consultant to do a study, but also, I mean, this seems more scientific than the convention center location, but it was subjective criteria, and they came back with a site, and we, unfortunately, I think it was the low point of our council, when not one, not two, but three city councilors were asking for a continuance to talk about the convention center location, and that was denied. And we, with minimal debate, approved a convention center location. And now I'm reading from Mr. Lackmire in his blog yesterday that the convention center, that many forces are at work to reconsider that and potentially move the convention center location. And I don't know what to make of that, but that's in the media. So when, based on that experience, when we have a study, and I appreciate all the efforts of the study, but when there's some subjectivity, I just, and I'm not asking for an extended period of time to delay MAPS, but one month, 30 days? I mean, I want to roll up my sleeves and sit down with Scott and Georgie and talk about May Avenue versus Pennsylvania Avenue. If I only get to do one, then let's drive it, let's talk about it, which one are we going to do? And let's talk about the... And we have the ability to make a decision about what goes in the top 31 and what doesn't. And I just don't think 30 days is an unnecessary delay. I'm not talking about some massive delay to delay MAPS 3, but 30 days to go over these studies where there's a lot of subjectivity involved, I don't think is unreasonable. I think it's healthier decision-making, and I think it would show growth as a council.
Councilman Ryan.
Ed, I don't think anybody's arguing with 30 days delay. It's the fact that if you're going to get different answers, you're going to have to change the criteria they use to assess the sidewalks. That's going to take time to reevaluate the criteria that was used, change it, to get a different answer. Because the consultants and the committee looked at the criteria, approved the criteria, and applied those criteria, whatever they thought it might be, and chose sidewalks to be, you know, included. Now, if we want different sidewalks and we have a different criteria involved, because are we challenging the criteria that was developed? I mean, the citizens committees have really worked hard. They are committed and passionate about every assignment they get. And as far as they're concerned, their committees work out of each first. And I appreciate that, because they are committed, they are hard-working and dedicated citizens who are giving their time to take a lot of the pressure off of the city council. But I think talking about the convention center here right now is counterproductive to the object, to the discussion we're having in front of us right now.
It's very relevant, Pat, because there were criteria selected for the convention center location selection. You had criteria, everything that you're saying, you could apply to that study. But there's subjectivity. There were criteria about mixing in with your urban fabric, but you could give a different score based on how you look at that. If you look at just what the best for convention center, you're going to get one score. If you look at a holistic approach at how the convention center interfaces with the rest of the projects and your overall core, you're going to get a different score. So I'd like more than a few days to just look at how, using this criteria, accepting this criteria, how were things weighted? What was the methodology used? Well, I just need more than a few days to process that.
Let me interject.
But I think the concerns that you and Councilman Wyatt have expressed makes us responsible for developing criteria for these projects. If you're not happy with them, if you think they're too subjective or they're weighted improperly, then we ought to develop our own set of criteria and give them to the cities, to the citizen committees or Subcommittee.
Let's see if we can focus our discussion for the next few minutes just on the sidewalk issue and leave the convention center and these others to a later time. So let's kind of focus our comments, if we could, just to what we're dealing with right here. Councilman Kelly.
I would just like to put this out for as a suggestion. It sounded like that there has been some frustration with the committee itself. And if they are having a difficult time in reference to this process that they were mandated to bring back to council, then why don't we have a workshop with the council and the Subcommittee and let them vent what their frustrations are and what their concerns are, so everyone will know? And we won't be up here piecemealing to try to figure out who didn't like this and who didn't like that, and what they understood and what they didn't understand, and when they got the information and when they didn't get the information. It just sounds like that there's been, you know, maybe some, the committee itself has had problems with this whole process, and they don't know who to go to. And at the end of the day, they said, well, just throw it back to the city council. And so as Councilman Ryan was saying, not for us to sit here and make the methodology in reference to what and when and how, but if we're going to use Subcommittee's in this total process that we vented out to the citizens, and if the process with them, they have a problem with it, then why don't we all get together and find out, you know, what is the problem? I think it would be better served than us sitting up here on a council chamber day and then going through this debate of who knew what. I didn't know what Councilman Shadid knew, and I haven't had one conversation with the engineers. I haven't had one conversation with the committee. I haven't called them, they haven't called me. And so now we find out that all this information has been communicated to others, one way or the other, and that is, there's a problem, obviously. It's a problem. And, you know, I think our job is, is to try to make this process run as smooth as possible in reference to what revenues we have to complete the project. But, you know, it just sounds like that that would be a better way of, and I think, you know, the issue of delaying this is necessary in order to clear up some of these issues. You know, I'm willing to go along with the process that we established. We said we would do Subcommittee's on each one of these projects, and people would be appointed, those individuals who are giving their time volunteering on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City and themselves and the city council. But if there's issues that exist in reference to either information they're receiving or they feel like that they're being, you know, kind of pushed in a corner to make decisions that they don't feel comfortable with, you know, that's where we need to be advised of. I mean, we need to know that.
Well, Councilman Shadid's been diligent enough to attend some of these, I think that's where he's got most of his information. He's been very conscientious. He's been very, very conscientious in trying to go to as many of these subcommittee meetings as he can. I appreciate that, and that's where some of this information is coming from. But when you take people on the committee who are strong-minded, passionate about a project, you're never going to get 100 percent consent. We don't get that on this council. You know, I find myself quite often being the person everybody disagrees with. But that happens because we're strong-minded, we have beliefs, as do the members of that subcommittee. And to expect them to come back with a unanimous decision is asking too much of them.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
If the consensus of this council is to put it off for a month, I have no problem.
David.
I just wanted to point out that we didn't—we didn't feel any frustration with the subcommittee outwardly. The vote was only one dissenting vote against this report. I think that the—the major frustration was that—that we couldn't go out and build all 300 alignments. That—that was a big frustration, and it was frustrating to see that some had to be picked instead of all 300.
Okay, just for your information, Francis has looked—there is no council meeting set up for September the 4th, one of the Tuesdays between now and the end of September.
Well, there's September 25th.
And September 25th is also available?
No. That's our next meeting.
What is the first meeting in September that we meet?
The 11th.
Well, then I would mention that we put this off until the 11th of September to give the subcommittee whatever time they need to reconsider that.
That would just—could we do the 25th, just because two councilors will be gone, and—and that would give them a month?
Well, yeah, September 11th is—a—well, okay, what's the next one after the 7th, 11th?
25th?
25th. Why wouldn't we allow it to go back to the MAPS Subcommittee to get some more input, and then bring it back to the council on the 25th?
The 25th is fine. That's—that's a full month from today.
Jim, can I ask you to explain to the public one technical issue? And that's—they're understanding is this $10 million for sidewalks. We're only going to spend 9.1 because it's moved up earlier in the timeline, so—you pick an arbitrary—
We just midpoint midpoint range as to when that—that the $10 million, any amount was. And if the project is done before then, it's discounted, and if it's done after that, it's—it's—it's—we increase the budget to accommodate the cost of inflation throughout the—the entire Maps 3 program.
So if you had done it in, say, 2014 or 2015, you'd spend $10 million. If you do it now, you spend 9.1 million?
Correct. Theoretically achieving the same amount.
The—we—another issue—we are ahead of schedule, are we not, in terms of revenues collected as part of the Maps 3?
Yes.
We're about $10 million ahead of schedule.
There's additional revenue that we received today. But again, there are ups and downs on a seven-year, seven-year, seven-month—or nine-month program. There's—there will be, I'm sure, downtime at some point in the future.
Say—I mean, I—I assume we've collected about $220 million, if we're two-sevenths?
We're—we're about 190 right now.
Would—that 190 earns 1% interest, or?
Well, we're—we're not doing very long market right now.
Yeah.
There's going to be some interesting come to on that, Councilman. If that's your point, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Okay, Dave, we've had a good discussion. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I made a motion to put this off—Mr. Vice Mayor, not Chairman. I put this off until September 25th, to give the committee adequate time to look at it and submit it back to the Maps Oversight Committee as a whole, and get it approved and sent up to the council. Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer action at this level until September the 25th, with the idea of passing this back to the Maps Oversight Committee and onto the Maps Subcommittee.
Will that timeline hit the subcommittee and the Oversight Committee both?
No, sir, it won't. With the—subcommittee meets on the 26th, so it needs to be—
But we could call a special meeting.
We could.
On this matter, if this is—
Why couldn't we defer indefinitely until the committee's ready to send it forward?
I—I would support that.
Okay. Are we—how do we get—
I'm 75 years old, so I don't want to put it off too long.
We had a motion and a second. Can we—can we—how do we get rid of that?
Make sure it's maybe the next birthday.
Okay. Would the mover be open to withdrawing his initial amendment—option and discuss Councilman Morris's?
We put it off until they're ready, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So now—
I'll make a motion to defer indefinitely until the Oversight Committee sends it forward again.
We have a motion and a second on that. Everybody understand? Just cast your votes, and so ordered. Thank you all. Thank you. All right, next up, item N, a request for salary continuation.
Move it.
We have a motion to approve it.
Second.
A second, any discussion? Just cast your votes, and it is approved. I need a motion to strike, item O.
Strike.
Okay. Just cast your votes, and it's so stricken. I need a motion to go into executive session on item P.
Bigger.
And it will be handled in executive session. Item Q, claims recommended for denials. Anyone here wishing to speak on any item under 8Q?
Move it.
We have a motion and a second, and they are denied. Item 9A, claims recommended for approval. Anyone wishing to speak on any of the items under 9A? We have a motion and a second, and it is so approved. Item 10A has been stricken. Items from council, Councilman Morris.
Well, at—at the risk of—well, it's late anyway. At the risk of starting this all over again, I—I'd just like to suggest that as we move forward with all of this, we spend more time talking about how we take the information and the—then the items on Maps 3 forward from this point to make the best, and quit bringing up the concept that one item was not liked as much as the other item was when the vote happened and the polling was going on, and all that kind of stuff. They all got voted in. They all have a—a place in Maps 3. And if we could just spend all of our energies from this point forward, making sure that we take the recommendations from the subcommittees, and from staff, and from the consultants, and from the—from the Budget Office and all of that, to concentrate on building the best projects we can do for the citizens from this point forward, and quit rehashing decisions that have already been made. If, just as the subcommittee on sidewalks couldn't—may not have got everything that every person wanted, this council was the same way. And—and for—to simply keep bringing up items that we didn't like, or that we don't think were handled properly, as a reason to—to—to just keep bringing it up and throwing it out there, I think does a disservice to the citizens from what they expect this horseshoe to do. And I would just urge the council to spend more time taking the things forward in the best way we can, and—from this, you know, as we move through all these Maps 3 projects. And—and I'll get off my soapbox now.
Councilman Shadid.
Yeah, I'm—I'm all about moving forward and—and not worrying about blame, or—I think that—the—the Maps 3 during the campaign is—is different than the Maps 3 in 2012, and I think we just have to all accept that and move forward. If—if there's shortcomings or changes in the plan, we just need to identify that as—as soon as possible. I bring up, you know, the convention center because it's being brought up. Mike Carrier, in the last Convention Center Subcommittee meeting, said $250 million is not going to be enough to build a convention center that will get us to the next tier. So what—what do we do with that? And then, one—one reason that—that 250—in addition to others, one reason is—is the convention center location. So those are—rather than than just put our head in the sand, I—I think we need to have an open and—and discussion, and adapt to change, not worry about—I'm fine with not worrying about—the—I think the polling has—has some significance, but it doesn't need to be the defining factor. We just take the situation as it comes and adapt. Thanks.
Well, I'll come back. David.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Cornet for getting to speak today at the Republican National Convention. Not from a political standpoint, but I'm sure he's going to be able to bring more attention to the great city of Oklahoma City, as he always does, whenever he's given an opportunity to speak. And to do it on a national basis like this, I just think it's great for the city of Oklahoma City, and I could congratulate him. Secondly, I'd like to invite everybody out this weekend to the Oklahoma City Community College Annual Arts Festival. Saturday evening, they're having Rave On, the Buddy Holly Experience, beginning at 7:30. And then Sunday evening, the Oklahoma City Philharmonic Orchestra was going to be out there along with fireworks. So it'll be a great weekend, a lot of good food, good art, and hopefully the weather's going to cooperate, and it'll be a great time. So I do encourage everybody from throughout the city. Oh, and you'll get to see the progress of their new theater that's being constructed out there.
David, I think that was rave on, not Ray Vaughn.
No, no, that's— It's R-A-V-E. It didn't come out as well.
I—I thought our commissioner was doing some kind of a great performance down at the college, so—
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just—he is capable, I'm certain. Just a couple of quick things, and I'm not sure in what order. I think, Gary, I'd like to talk to your comment and to Ed's, and just remind everybody that we really have a great track record in being able to deal with these issues when we do come up short. And Pat has admirably chaired the Sports Facilities Trust, and that's another example, where we thought we had a—a budget number, you know, based on tax revenue collections, and in fact, we hit a recession, I think, the day—the—the day the vote went into place. And so we had less dollars to work with. But the committee has done a great job, and we've ended up with, I think, a very wonderful product for the citizens. And we can do that again. And we'll just have to, you know, work through each one of these processes. So we have experience doing this. I—I just really wanted to thank everybody also that came out for the ODOT meeting. It was a huge crowd, 500 people or so. And this is another example of where dialogue with our citizens about a project is having a really big impact on the community. And I thought it was a wonderful turnout. And I also would just, on a personal note, like to thank the staff for dealing with a tricky problem that we have at 10th and Walker. We've had—I guess we've discovered that we've got about a 100-year-old sewer in place, and as the city's growing in the Midtown area, it's been an issue. And staff has been incredibly responsive and very helpful in that regard. So, thank you.
I would like to thank Pastor Tedman at Net Church. On Sunday, his church and the young members of the church put on a political awareness program, and it was simply to educate the young people about the importance of participating in the political process and voting. And I was invited to—to be a part of the program, along with Lieutenant Governor Todd Lamb. And it was a fantastic presentation in reference to questions, and in reference to giving statements from each one of us, in reference to the importance of voting. Wasn't—not one word was mentioned in reference to political, party, partisan affiliation at all, which was kind of interesting, that you could have a program and go through a dialogue, a conversation, and not mention whether or not you're Democrat or Republican, but it was already known. But I was just impressed that, you know, the—the—the reach out of some of our members, pastors in—the—in the Northeast Quadrant of Oklahoma City, to do some positive engagement with our young people in light of all the—the negative challenges that we're seeing. And—and—and I—I'll admit that we have a—a multitude of issues in reference to young people's negative behavior. And to have individuals who are stepping out and trying to bring people into the community and into their settings to give and to educate and mentor these young people about a better quality of life, and—and—and so I was just impressed with—with their church program and the—the program yesterday. And so, one other comment I would like to—to follow up on, and that is, we had this matter that was on from Parks and Recreation at—at Pitts Park. I don't want anyone and nor the foundation to take my comments as a—a negative or unappreciative, but I was only asking because when I saw the memo, I was kind of alarmed about some of the complaints that we had—that I have received, as it relates to some of our outdoor activities at some of the parks. And as we look at the totality of our park system, and there's a—a—a serious study that's being—been at, you know, in reference to how do we go forth and—and upgrade the amenities of our parks and the needs in the parks? And I was just more concerned about the possibility of using, you know, a—a another facility or one that is getting more activity as it relates to youth and programs. I think sometimes—some people tend to think that all black kids need to know how to play basketball, and that basketball is not everything in the African-American community, and that, you know, there are other areas of life and activities that should be more engaged and —and—and—and dealt with. And so that was my comment. It's like—it seems like that every time that there is something to do in reference to giving to the African-American recreational center, it's a basketball court. And you can't play basketball when you have snow on the ground, you can't play basketball when it's raining, can't play basketball when it's snowing on the outside. We have some facilities that need some major, major upgrades on the inside of some of these facilities, I think that we should be more focused on than some of the outside recreational areas. Thank you.
Councilman Ryan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say to the subcommittees and the Committee of Maps, don't be discouraged by what we did this morning. Your work is valuable, your work is important, and—and there's a deep feeling of appreciation, I think, of all the effort that goes into these sort of things. But I—I want to make one point to my colleagues here. We may never get an unanimous vote on any of these projects. There's always going to be some dissension. And if we—if we adopt the policy of sending it back every time we fail to get a unanimous vote, and there's one dissenter come forward, we have a long road to hope. But I do want to make sure that the Maps Subcommittee, the Maps Committee as a whole, don't get discouraged by what went on this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ryan. Real quick from Ward 3, some good news, I think. We have a neighborhood out there, the River Park neighborhood. Gina Daniel was the founder of the association, Tommy Hay is the current president. They gave a report at their meeting the other day. This is a neighborhood which is in one of the most challenging areas of Oklahoma City. They have no dues for their membership, and Gina Daniel reported that in the last several years, they had completed 130 projects of rehabbing homes using their own people and people from Chesapeake, Hodges &amp; Dell Corporation. They had estimated that they had created over $100,000 of value, basically out of nothing. And—the reason I bring that up, if they can do that, I think we have enough collective will with all of this council to resolve the problems with these sidewalks and move forward, and create a product that our citizens would be proud of as we move forward. So that's the end of my commercial. Citizens to be heard, we have several citizens that have asked to be speak. First up, are you going to go to you first? I take that? I take no? City manager reports. I apologize to our citizens. City manager report, plans for Kirk Park.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Before we get to Kirk Park, just for a second, I want—I want to step back just for a second on the maps processes that we've had. We've had the original maps, we had Maps for Kids, we've had the Sports Facilities, which was a semi-Maps program, and Maps 3. On each of these programs, as we look back, they—they all had issues as we went forward. Maps 3 had a lot of—or Maps 1 had a lot of unknowns as we went forward. We had structural issues over at—the—the Civic Center, the library. I don't know how many sites we had for the library, but it was at least four that we hopped around, trying to find a place for it to go. Canal got moved, ballpark got moved, there's a lot of issues there. We ran short of money, and we actually had to do a six-month extension on it. And it turned out okay at the end. Maps for Kids, four months into it, we shut down. Maps for Kids, four months into it, we just shut down and did a—a demographic reshift, if you recall. We—we'd stopped and shuffled the money all—all the way around because of changes that were happening in the school district at—that—at that point. in the school district at that point. And so the program, as it's about to end up, and you're going to see some information on that in just a few minutes, it's come along really quite well. And, you know, this one's out, that one came in within budget, but we really did change a lot of things because of the changes, the demographics that were going on in the school district. The NBA tax that went through, that had a different, that was only a 15-month tax. There was a recession during that 15-month tax, so the revenues didn't come in where they needed to be. So we had to really re-engineer the building over there, cut out a lot of things that we thought we'd have to put into the Ford Center. But yet, at the end of the day, we're still the top five or six building in the NBA, so really, success going here. As we go forward on MAPS 3, there's going to be changes, it's just going to happen. We know that it's a big project. And no, we didn't do a lot of due diligence on the project as we went in. We kind of picked up areas and decided to put in money. 250 for the convention center, that's what my carrier asked for. And so we put in what was asked for on that. And as far as changing the site, I haven't heard about anybody wanting to change the site. I know that a reporter came in and talked to me about it the other day, and I told him at that point in time that I don't know anything about changing the site. So that's out there. But we're going to have some issues, and a good debate about this, using the subcommittees and having a debate and deciding to send it back and go forth and maybe saying that this is a priority and we need to put more money on it, that's all good stuff. And I appreciate the debate and the comments of those types as we go forward. And I just hope we continue to be positive. I'm convinced that we will bring MAPS 3 in to be a very successful project at the end of the day. But boy, we still are going to have a lot of, we've still got a lot of issues to deal with as we get on down the line. So with that, moving on, we're fortunate enough to have Greg Dewey here today with Sandridge, who has been very patient this morning. He's brought along with him his friend and associate, Rob Rogers from Marvel Rogers in New York City. And I want to frame this just for a second, because we have a unique project here. And this is a project that's not yet totally defined, but we thought it would be important to bring it to council to talk about where we're going. We put some money in the '07 bond issue to redo Kerr Park and Couch Drive down there. It was to be put in. Sandridge and Chesapeake have stepped up and said, you know, we'd like to take that to a higher level than what you've done. And we would like to work with you on that. And so they've got the architect working on it and along those lines. We don't have dollar amounts tied down, we don't know how much money is going to be put in, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like at this point in time. But they have put together some concepts on it at this point in time. And before we get a lot further on down the road, we thought it would be very appropriate to bring those comments to council. Don't necessarily need your feedback today, but if you have some thoughts or comments on how you want to do, we can get with either Sandridge or staff to help address those kind of issues. And so Greg, if you'll take it at this point?
Yeah, yeah, completely agree with that. As you know, we're five years into a redesign of what we're calling the Sandridge Commons. It's a multi-year project. Again, five years into it, we just are excited today to be able to reveal just another piece of that, which is the Kerr Park and the Couch Drive redesign. Have been in cooperation with Chesapeake and the city. So again, preliminary design that we want to show you today, and I'm excited to introduce to you, Rob Rogers with Rogers Marvel Architect.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Council. Greg puts it about right. What we've been doing is working with Sandridge now for a long time on master planning, the reoccupation of what was the Kerr McGee buildings, renovation of the tower. I'm sure you've been by there. We've got both renovation of the Braniff Building underway, and we're coming out of the ground with what we're calling the amenities building, which is the building that is adjacent to these parks. And during the course of the master plan, is when we learned that the city was anticipating to spend some monies relative to the park. And that's when Sandridge and Chesapeake agreed together that they would up the ante and provide additional funding and resources for the reconstruction of that park. So the images and the ideas that I will show you quickly this morning come from that overall master planning stage. So there has been a very preliminary meeting with planning with parks with the city, but these are, this is just the beginning of the process. And I wanted to point that out because the world, the world of digital images presents a level of finish far in advance of when it's actually been determined. The team working together, our offices leading the effort, we're working with Peter Schout, Herr Schout, landscape architects, who are also working on the commons. Rand Elliott of Elliott Associates is also part of the conceptual design team, being supported by Chesapeake as part of their effort. And Frank for short Bruza, who's been our local affiliate on the project throughout, is engaged in engineering and the other aspects of the park. So just very brief, and I imagine you're well aware of this, but there were actually two parks that are adjacent to each other, which is Kerr Park and then Couch Park, and then there's the Couch Drive, which are the subject areas that we're looking at for the redesign. I won't really get into an overall critique, but there were a lot of issues that we were aware of and hearing about in terms, everything from accessibility, which I heard you discuss at length this morning, to other aspects of what city parks do and belong. And so in the reimagining of this area, we've put at a forefront the simple visibility, simple movement, 100% universal accessibility across the site in all directions. As you know, there's a substantial slope, almost a full story, between Couch Drive up to Kerr. And so the park is intended now to be crossable in all directions in each way. These, I imagine these dimensions and the characteristics and the plantings will all change as we develop our discussions and go through with the public process, but I wanted to outline some of the goals. We really like the idea that with the construction of the new Sandridge building, that Couch Drive has the capacity to become really special and wonderful urban park. The Sandridge is supporting the installation of a restaurant, a local restaurateur, on the lower level of that new building that will open out onto Kerr Park and onto Couch Drive. And with Cool Greens over on the corner, we imagine that this becomes a really terrific area downtown, and we hope that other spaces along there really will become appropriate for food, restaurant, and retail. And of course, in the history of the city, which we want to make a part of the fabric of the park, details yet to be determined, but of course, this is the leftover of where the railroad came through and cut the original north and south portions of downtown. And so we want to develop subtle details in the paving and in the elements of the park that help describe and give an understanding of that historical character of this part of the city. And to Couch Drive, I think we'll have many, many, many discussions. It's essential that we be able to supply service and access to buildings that have frontages and pieces along that area. But there are many kinds of shared walkways and surfaces that are part of a contemporary streetscape understanding and streetscape design. And we're going to want to see if there's ways through either raised, a sort of curb cut, raised curb, other kinds of pavings, that we can develop an attitude of shared space potentially between the pedestrian and vehicular demands along that route. We imagine that there will be heavily landscape portions as well as more open, sunny, and bright portions of the park. These, again, will be developed as we move through the meetings. And we're looking forward to a very intense programming effort on the park, both understanding the kinds of public art that have been there in the past and what opportunities are for maybe more of that in the future, including, you know, very simple places perhaps to hear music or to have a school group meet. And that, I think one of the really great things is, our client, Sandridge, has made a strong commitment to an effort to add programming to the park, which is an essential part of quality public spaces. And I think by partnering and creating both a sort of sense of city ownership and assistance from the local corporate partner, we have the opportunity to work with you and design a really terrific place. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the council?
Is Russell here?
Yes, Russell's in the background.
Can we just hear Russell?
Sure. Russell, could you join us?
Well, Russell's coming. I do have a comment. I appreciate your reflection on the history of that corridor. I mean, that it was the rail line in Oklahoma City, and that's what provided the space for this building and the county building across the street, and the Civic Center, and the jail, all that was built on that old railroad right away. So anything you can do to kind of preserve that part of our heritage, I would appreciate.
I think it's great, because Leadership Square kind of consumes it, and it's really, really a nice piece of space, actually. Urbanistically, it'd be great quality. We imagine probably a bosque of trees through there, so you have nice shade and.
I'd like to thank you an awful lot for the sensitive restoration of the Braniff Building as well, your next-door neighbor, actually, and watching it with very close eyes. And it just looks wonderfully exciting, the restoration and all that, it's just beautiful.
Great. Well, wait till we finish the restaurant on the ground floor. We're putting all the original historical plasterwork back.
Oh, perfect.
That was in the lobby of the Braniff that will be part of that café.
Great. Well, thank you.
Right.
Dr. Shadie?
Russell, just what are your thoughts, looking at these renderings?
I mean, as Rob says, it's, you know, it's early stages on the design, but they give a lot of thought to how the space is going to be utilized. And, you know, I really like the fact that they are going to put a heavy emphasis on the programming of it. That space in the past, while it was an admirable effort in terms of high design of it, never really worked, because we never had the population, never had the programming to support the previous design. It was a lot more hard space. I think the direction that they're going in is the right direction, so I'm confident that they'll give us a very good space.
What do you think about the amphitheater? And I guess we're taking that out.
The characteristics of the amphitheater and fountain beyond kind of the staggering maintenance issues that are involved with those, are also this completely inaccessible across its breadth. And there were a lot of areas, and they're from a public space point of view, where I'll just put it simply, one can hide, and therefore people do hide or get away from the public eye. And that tends to, once you create the capacity for that population to sort of take over the space and not be seen on a regular basis, it really challenges the rest of the use of the space. And so I think opening it up and making it visible and accessible throughout its breadth is actually a key move to restoring it as a broad public space on that corner.
Yeah, I do, I really support the emphasis on the accessibility. One of the features that I really like is the actual street portion where we accommodate both, so that there is that accessibility for the service vehicles, but any other time it can be converted, it can convert it into a complete pedestrian capacity. So there's that option now for all of those buildings, particularly Cool Greens, to be able to orient out towards this public space, in addition to the restaurant that they're building on the ground floor. So that's going to enliven that whole area there, and that's, I think, a really important goal.
Steve Sherman wanted to talk about putting a wine shop in his building, and I said, just wait two years and it'll be perfect, so.
Yes, David?
Yes, thank you for that report. I think it's a great move forward for downtown Oklahoma City. I do want to thank both Sandridge and Chesapeake for making that kind of investment in our downtown area, especially Chesapeake, who's not physically located down here, but, you know, also Sandridge again, which will be the corporation, all of its employees, we utilize in the space. Again, just as Councilman White said, you know, I think it's great that we will use Couch Drive more as a historical remembrance or preservation of the city, especially early on. And I would just encourage, if you could, to supplement that with some type of information that could be shared, whether they're plaques or something like that, about some of the early city leaders, both from a political standpoint, civic and business, that really helped shape and helped the city grow to where it is today. I just think that area would be a great facility to help people remember how we got to where we are today, going back over 100 years ago.
We anticipate a really vigorous discussion of the public art opportunities, and that certainly includes interpretation. And it's one of the places where Rand Elliott is also, we've had long conversations about the history of the site and the story and, you know, when and where and how, I guess, Couch was shot, something like that, but.
Not you.
You look pretty good.
And so I think we'll have a lot of very serious fun finding ways to include those things in the park.
Is the fullness of the trees and shrubs, is that just kind of to do a perception, or is this more going to be reality? It seems like that that could also be an issue in reference to security of people, you know, hiding and berms that kind of like, you know, close off site areas?
We do hope to have some very robust areas of planting. Whether we'll come down to grade level, you know, with those things, so you keep an eye sight through the landscape, I think will be very important. But I also, if you've had a chance, it's probably hard to see now with all the barricades, but Sandridge is committed to installing some pretty mature landscape so far on the commons, and we would expect to be installing it at a similar level of size and maturity in the park across the street, so that it's, we're not going in with sticks when the drawings look like that.
Well, I too would echo the statements of Councilman Greenwell in reference to the commitment that the company has made in reference to this project. I think it's a great, great transformation of the area. And I would also like to say to Sandridge, thank you for all the hard diligent work that you have contributed to Edwards Elementary Schools and the other school, Martin Luther Delma Parks in Northeast Oklahoma City. You guys have done a fantastic job in reference to changing the attitudes of so many young people with your contributions at the school. And it's not a one-day hit and miss. You guys have been there, you stay there, and we really do appreciate all the contributions that your company has made to those schools. Thank you.
Councilman Ryan?
I'd just like to add my thanks to what my colleagues have said and asked. One question, Rob, you mentioned programming. Can you give me some kind of, some examples of the kind of programming you might be?
There would be things like movie night, like sponsoring music during lunchtime, other kinds of things, whether it's, you know, the range of storytelling or interpretive times, there may be places to tell the history of the city if we've got some things marked in the paving and other things there, so that it becomes regular and active. And it was, it's available really because we've got both the amenities building, which has the auditorium and reception space for Sandridge, so they expect that there will be community relationships in and out of there. I don't think I ever presented it here, it was only at the DDRC, but there's also medical facilities in that building that are on the ground floor, dental and doctor that are open to the public as well as to the population at large. The restaurant, the restaurant will have a larder, we're calling it portion, which is actually like a retail come-and-go function for daytime and evening, so that what they make in their bakery is available. So there's, there's going to be a lot of exchange of both activities and opportunities between Sandridge, its employees, and this piece of public space. Functions that are specific to the corporation will take place on the commons and on the site of Sandridge itself. But this is a place for their public outreach activities. It could be the Santa Run, it could be other kind of things where the park gets engaged in that way.
Russell, I understand if there's maintenance issues, that's fine, I get that, but just if you can, for my own education, if you're, I mean, in terms of placemaking and urban parks, if you're trying to do the programming he's talking about, storytelling and getting people congregated, and does amphitheater not lend itself to that, or?
Well, I mean, I don't know, and he doesn't know yet what that final design is going to be. I see the, you know, the foundation of that in this screening area that they have for movie night, but I would imagine that that will be, you know, there'll be a lot of discussion about the programming and then how to design the park to that. That is a very different model from what we've ever had, and I think we're very fortunate to have people who can provide that amount of thought to the actual use of the park over an extended period of time. And we've seen that in the Myriad Gardens, and we've seen the result of that. And I'm sure that Sandridge is more than. sure that Sandridge is, is, is more than inclined to try and replicate that level of engagement. It'll be on a smaller scale of course, but nevertheless, um, I'm very appreciative of the fact that the design for this public space is not an afterthought, that it actually is part of the full programming of the, of the campus, so I, I, I mean, we don't know what it looks like yet, but I, I feel confident that they will, uh, look at what all those different opportunities are and be able to design to that and it will be something significantly better than we've done before.
Yeah, I think, just to the point, one, we, I think that we're definitely looking for places that work like an amphitheater, but when you build a pure amphitheater and it's empty most of the time, it looks like an empty amphitheater. And, you know, extensive site covered with fountains are really cool in July, in January they're not so great. And so, one of the things we're trying to do is make sure that we've got a, a public space that has a robust 12-month landscape attitude availability, uh, thing, so that even the areas like where we've pulled the building back on the ground floor, so we have overhang areas that are shady, that's actually private land because it's where the, the Sandridge property line is, but it's got tables and chairs. So if you're looking to be in the shade, in the sun and the gathering, we have the right kind of choices to make this a vibrant space for as broad a period as possible during the year.
They've given a lot of thought, I mean, early on when they were presenting the initial concepts for this, uh, they had a, um, comprehensive wind analysis and ambient temperature analysis and that's not anything that we've considered before, with the goal of ensuring that you had an environment that was going to be conducive to this 12-month use, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Greg, thank you for coming down. Appreciate your patience.
Rest of the city manager report, sir.
Yes, I think in the interest of time, we'll put off the MAST for Kids update and, and do that at some time, that's, it's a good review of what's going on with MAST for Kids, but not critical to, to be seen today unless the council desires otherwise. I do want to point out that the August, uh, sales news tax, uh, collections were, were strong. Um, I want to talk about the safe room rebate program because we did, uh, had, we're under the belief that, that there would be FEMA dollars involved to have a program, a rebate program previous to, to what we'd done several years ago, and so we set that, that process up in, in anticipation of that. Because of, of other disasters around the country, the FEMA money has been, uh, I think diverted into, to response areas and not available for the safe room program at this point in time and, and we're hopeful that in the future, that there will be some dollars that we can use for that at the future, in, in the future, but it is not available today. Um, it was reported, uh, that, I heard this morning, but, uh, that, you know, the city was not funding that, well, the city was never funding that, we were making it a conduit to get federal dollars there and, and, so that was our approach on that. And then I just want to point out that we've now been a couple of months into NeoGov, which is our online application process, and that's working very, very well for the city. Great responses, a lot of people, uh, applying online and I think it's less than 1% are not applying online, so that's, it's been very successful worldwide. And that's all I have, sir, if you have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Citizens to be heard, Lynn Bennett? If you would, Lynn, uh, give us your address also for the record.
Yes, I will. Can you hear me all right? All right, good, because I'm rather soft spoken ordinarily. My name is Lynn Frazier Bennett and I live at 8625 Northwest 91st in Mr. Mars Ward. I'm the widow of Perry Lee Bennett, Sr. He died on August 10th this year. He died from multiple complications caused by the West Nile virus. Perry was the first person to die in Oklahoma for many years from this virus, but certainly not the last, as we well know. As I sit and listen to your council meeting, I've probably changed my address to you several times, because I've heard buzzwords like passionate, committed, concerns, frustrations, the trails are 60 miles short and the sidewalks are 50 miles short, oh my, oh my. I haven't heard one word about what we're doing about the mosquito population in this city, not one. I'm concerned, I'm passionate, I'm frustrated and I'm really ticked off, okay? I really am. Why can't we be passionate and frustrated and committed to our citizens' health? Why can't we? What's the problem with it? Anybody got an answer? Don't think so. I'd like to acquaint you with Mr. Perry Bennett and it'll be an honor to do so. Here's a little snapshot. Perry loved Oklahoma. He was born in Oklahoma City in 1929 in a small home on 5th and Robinson. He would tell people, "I was born under I-40, but it wasn't built yet." When asked if he had lived in Oklahoma all of his life, his answer would be, "Not yet. Yet has come, hasn't it?" Perry was a carpenter, a profession he deemed as honorable because Jesus was a carpenter and he felt that was a good thing to be. He worked with painstaking accuracy and precision and knowledge in each and every project he undertook, because if anyone inspects my work after I'm gone, I want them to say, "Well done." Mr. Bennett worked on practically every business, every building in this city with one construction company or another. One of my jokes with him was when we were driving down the highways in Oklahoma City, "Oh, I built that building." I'm, "All by yourself? Why not just show me the buildings you didn't build?" It gave my husband great pleasure to be a Boy Scout leader, a team leader for Christmas in April, and a tutor at Gatewood Elementary School. His greatest pleasure when he was a tutor was he tutored a fifth grade boy who couldn't read and comprehend and he said, "The day that light bulb went on, on that young man's, over the young man's head, was the greatest day he ever had tutoring." And that young man went on to go to Class and Magnet School because he was an excellent Perry's greatest delight was his family, mine and his, ours. We intermingled like nothing you've ever seen, you'd have thought we were all blood relatives. Up until the day he died, Perry was active. He had a photographic memory. He was an avid reader, Louis Lamour being his favorite. He was a sharp card player, don't ever get in a poker game with him, not that good now. And he loved doing the crossword puzzles in the Daily Oklahoman, but especially the Sunday one because it was more difficult. All of these things Perry enjoyed until one day, the one day before he was taken to the ER at Baptist Integris. We were planting grass seeds Saturday morning and raking dirt and Monday morning I had to take him to Baptist Integris. And I may say kudos to the Oklahoma City Fire Department because they were there in an instant, they were professional, they were gentle, they were kind and considerate and they knew what they were doing.
Ma'am, can I, can I, I'm, I'm very sorry, can I please interrupt you just for a moment and I'm sorry to interrupt you?
Yes.
I want to honor Perry by studying this issue and reading about it, which I admit, other than knowing that the Dallas mayor declared an emergency in the spring...
All right, but let me finish, may I?
Well...
Then you can talk.
Well, we're, this is going on more than the three minutes, but I'm wondering if you can...
Well, I'm really sorry.
Councilman Shadid, I'm going to give her a leeway.
I'm really sorry that I took more than three minutes.
No, no, that's fine, I'm just wondering if you can...
I didn't realize I was relegated to three minutes. Had I realized, I would have cut it short.
I'm just asking you to help me understand what policies you'd like us to consider.
I'll tell you.
Okay.
The Friday before he was rushed to the ER, he spent the lunch hour at the Boulevard Cafeteria with the good old boys, as I call them, the Class and Alumni. It was a good time. There were 14 or so of them there and they told their stories and ate their beef stew and they had a grand time and I heard all about it when he got home and he was excited because the night before he had called 10 buddies to remind them and most of them showed up. Perry's illness came swiftly and it was a horrible ending to a life of a loving, kind and generous person. The West Nile virus totally corrupted and denied the function of his heart, his brain and all the other parts of his body. Tubes and machines, life supports were all that kept him alive. Now our husband, father, brother, uncle and so many other titles is gone from us. So, I ask, what is being done to deny this ruthless virus the next victim? Since Perry's death, there have been three more here in Oklahoma and there are many One wonders why no vaccine has been made to prevent it, but that's another question for another time and another place. One excellent reliable source informed me that regardless of the belief that the virus attacks only the young and the very old and infirm is wrong. It does indeed attack, not discriminating regards age or gender, and it will attack whomever it will and the illness will progress according to the vulnerability of the individual. This same source informed me that mosquitoes have been tested for the West Nile virus here in Oklahoma and that two out of three of the mosquitoes tested carried that virus. That's quite a bit, which makes me wonder if the thinking here is two out of three ain't bad. Today I ask that you as city leaders and the citizens also begin to take a more aggressive action in combating this virus, all of us, by taking proper care of our immediate surroundings, by eliminating places that could accumulate standing water, by keeping our fence lines clear of weeds and debris, especially those of us who live by creeks and diverted creeks and please use repellent, DEET, skinsosoft, eucalyptus oil, whatever, every time you go outside, but especially in the early morning and at dusk. City leaders, please take immediate action to eliminate the problem in and around the areas of the city where this illness or death has occurred, not just wherever, just where, at the onset, where death or illness has occurred. Just imagine the concerns people have when a neighbor gets ill or dies. My neighbors are like ballistic. There's 11 children in my area, just on that one street, I'm not talking about the whole housing area, and their parents won't let them go out because most of them are too young to have DEET. I could use skinsosoft, but whatever, they won't let them go out and play. Last evening on K4 News at 6 o'clock, Dale Cafflin, Director of the Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County Health Department, made several statements that made me wonder if he and his superiors have tunnel vision. Just get the lava, right, lava, right? Spraying is not good because of the Oklahoma wind. Well, since when would anybody spray? When it was windy. I'm not a mathematician or a meteorologist, but I can kind of figure I wouldn't want to spray anything when it was windy. We must all go after both, the insects that do the biting and mating and their spawn. Then and only then will a problem be eliminated and then only if a continuous effort is made each year to keep this problem in check. Until there is a preventative vaccine, they vaccinate horses for this, don't they? Where's ours? Scuttlebutt has it that the city doesn't have enough money to fight this West Nile virus aggressively. I don't know. If this is true, well, how about using some of those millions in revenue that are coming in from all these wonderful buildings that are housing all these wonderful teams and whatever it is downtown, raking in the tax revenue? And I hear you talking about millions for trails and sidewalks? I know these things are important for a city and I know this city is growing and it wants to be right up there with the top cities in the country, but if you've got people dying and sick with West Nile virus, like Dallas, who's wanting, who would want to come here? Not me. Perry's sons, who are mine, if not in blood, in love, told me yesterday, "Dad would be very proud with me for addressing this cause, so maybe no other family would have to experience the grief that our family has endured." In closing, you, you lose a loved one. You, you watch them gasp for breath and their eyes rolling in their head. You, you see your loved one with paralyzed legs. You have your heart stop and you're shaking to the core and can hardly dial 911. You hold your loved one's hand as he takes his last breath, or she takes her last breath, I should say. Do that. Be there. See what West Nile virus does to the individual person, you. You see that? A man with a beautiful brain reduced to nothing. The neurologist said, Perry's head, from the EEG they took, he said, "Imagine that you're in an airplane up over the United States and all the lights are on. That's what our brains look like when we have a good EEG." Perry's lights were out. Can you imagine a neurologist telling you that? How would you take it? Or you, or you, or you. You lose your best friend in the whole world to West Nile virus and then you tell me, "No. We can't solve the problem by spraying. We don't have the funds to do it." You will be saying to me, "We must attack this West Nile virus with both guns blazing, larva and adult." You may cover your eyes and your ears and your mouth, but this is an evil that's not going to go away without everyone working together to eliminate it. I challenge you to spend as much time in consideration and as much passion on the West Nile problem as you have on the sidewalks and trails. Thank you for your time, even though I ran over and I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
God bless Oklahoma and God bless the United States of America to allow me to be standing here because if I lived in this, any other country, this wouldn't be happening, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Palmer Harris. If you would, state your, uh, address also, Palmer.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't have a...
I'm sorry, I don't have a residential address at this time, but I do have a mail-in address. It's on, it's on 10th and Walker. All right. I came here because I'm kind of concerned about my safety. I mean, the way I've been getting treated by the, some of the police officers in the Oklahoma City Police Department has been very, it's been very, let's just say, discouraging to me. You know, I mean, I'm starting to feel unsafe about even, you know, about even being here in this city because it feels like I'm being targeted unfairly, you know, because, you know, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting treated rudely and disrespectfully, you know, and, and I really don't know how I should combat it with someone that has a badge and a gun, especially with me being an unarmed citizen. And, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of concerned about my safety. So what's, what can I do about this?
What is your, what is the concern? I mean, I understand you say you're concerned about your safety. Is there a particular-
The thing is, is that when certain officers see me, they, they, they get gung ho and they jump out and they snap at me, and I mean, how am I to respond to that?
Palmer, we're going to have the Chief of Police, he's going to be coming in, and he'll meet with you. So if you just go over here and wait for him, he'll talk about the particulars of your concerns for your safety, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
It's time to recess the council meeting, and we've got on this, Jen, where did Mr. Couch go? Mr. Couch, do we want to convene the Finance Committee?
We do.
Time to convene the Finance Committee? We will be, we will be brief.
And this is just the introduction today, so this is not the presentation of the Capital Improvement Plan. This is just the introduction. There will be a number of presentations coming forth on this. And so Doug, if you'd hit the high points?
Yeah, we'll hit it very quickly here. We're distributing the books to you here that have the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Five-year plan is updated every two years. This plan is a requirement in state law that we adopt a five-year plan. It requires approval by the Planning Commission and then adoption by the City Council. Well, I'll try to do just right, very quickly here. The, the process that we've gone through to get to this point here, departments have been working on this, this plan since last November, December. They put their plans together. We had an internal team that reviewed all the projects. We've made preliminary presentations to the Planning Commission so that they could get some initial impressions of what's in the plan. The City Manager's Office has reviewed the plans here over the last summer, and now we're presenting the, the plan officially to you. And we'll be reviewing it then over the coming three council meetings. We'll have departments making presentations to you on the plans that they have in there, and this will be going on concurrently with the Planning Commission doing their review. Just to hit real quickly, what we'll take a look at here is the funding sources. The capital plan, when you put all the projects together, is $2.4 billion over the next five years. It's quite a bit of money. Of that, 39% comes from trust funds, the largest portion of that being Aqua, the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. They take, they make up about 2/3 of that total, $652 million. Special tax funds at 31.8% are another large contributor. The MAPS three projects fall in this category, as well as the OCMAPS projects. Geo bond projects, of course, are a significant source of capital funding. They're 15.8% of our five-year plan here, about $387 million. We have a portion that's unfunded, that's 6.6%. That includes projects such as the upgrade to our public safety radio system, some of the projects that have been identified by Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority. There's some other parks and other projects in there as well that are unfunded. The plan that you've received there at the back, we have a detailed breakdown if you want to get into a little more detail of the funding sources. Of course, the plan itself has every project that's listed there and the funding scheduled over the next five years. I won't go through each of these different charts here since we're such, so late in the, in the day here, but we've got charts that break down the, again, the $2.4 billion by function as well as by type. And so you can see whether we've got facilities, infrastructure, utilities, equipment, mobile equipment, such as vehicles and that sort of thing, are all put together in here. We'll be going over the next three council meetings into depth into the, the largest departments. In fact, we've got the schedule here. In two weeks, we'll have IT, Parks and Utilities. After that, airports, MAPS, transit and parking, and then finally Police, Fire and Public Works will be presenting their plan. And so during those presentations, you'll have an opportunity to ask about, ask questions about the specific projects and the timing of when they've got those in there. So with that quick overview, I'd be happy to take any questions in a course, again, again, over the next several weeks, we'll have time to look at this more in depth.
Any questions from the council? Okay, then I think on item B down here, we need a motion to receive it. Any discussion?
Just, so all the 2007 Geo bond projects that are in this haven't been done yet?
That's correct. Well, they may have been, there are a few in here that have been awarded that are still in progress. So if they still have funding in the current year, they should be listed in there, but all the other ones are ones that have not yet been started yet.
Any further questions? And it is received. With that, we need to adjourn the Finance Committee and reconvene as the council meeting and go into executive session. We shall return.